And we are recording. Ladies and gentlemen, we're on, we're in, and right now attendees are at 14. If you need me, just yell, I'll hear you, and the meeting is yours, Mr. Flynn.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, July 22nd, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. It is now 6:35. For these Zoom meetings, we're going to do a lot of roll calls, so I'll be calling your name to determine a qualm. Mr. Matson?
I'm here.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Reyes?
Yeah.
Mr. Porcelli?
Yeah.
Mr. Kenny on yet? Okay, we'll wait for him, we'll wait till he pops on. Secretary Lukowicz?
Here.
Vice Chair Kalunian?
Yeah.
Chairman Flynn is here. Okay, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance. To the flag. United States of America. To the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty.
Justice.
And justice for all.
Okay, we're going to go to number four, approval of minutes. I have 4.1, June 10th. Of the 2020 special meeting. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
So moved.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second.
I'm sorry, Rick Kalunian, so moved.
And Mr. Porcelli seconded it?
Okay.
Any discussion on, on the June 10th meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have to abstain on this one because I was not at that meeting.
Okay, Mr. Matson, Mr. Matson abstains from the vote on the, the meeting, the meeting minutes.
I'm going to abstain for me because I wasn't at that meeting either.
Okay, and Mr. Reyes also.
Okay. Mr. Chair, same for me, say.
Okay, I'll start the roll call. For approval of the minutes. Mr. Anderson?
Approve.
Mr. Kenny? Mr. Kenny's not here. Mr. Porcelli?
Yeah, approve.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Here. Approve.
Mr. Kalunian? And Chairman Flynn approves, approves the minutes. Okay, we'll jump down to 4.2. June 24th. Our meeting. Approval of minutes on that. Can we get a?
Motion to approve by Carl.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Reyes.
Okay, Mr. Reyes, any discussion on the minutes for June 24th? Okay, I'll do a roll on that. Mr. Matson?
Oh, aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Approve.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Porcelli? Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian?
Aye.
Chairman Flynn says aye. And we have a ratification of a decision on the Oaks at East Shaw. The applicant is Tyre Land Trust Company LLC, owner is Richard Boygan, ETRS, and Richard W. in Herman, Boygan. CEO, Colleen A. Carlson. It's an AP 23 watts 47 and 47.001 AP 32 watt 152, it's zone RR 20. Can I get a motion for the ratification of the decision?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I have to recuse myself from that because I'm in a butter.
Okay.
So I will abstain from this.
Okay, well noted, Carl will be abstaining from this vote. Can I get a motion to ratify the decision?
Glenn Anderson, motion to ratify.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second. Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes seconded. Any questions?
Discussion.
Hey, go ahead, Mr. Kalunian.
Mr. Flynn, I just wanted to follow up. I believe when we approved this, there was a meeting scheduled in the field with the applicant and in a butter. I just wanted to get it on the record. Did that take place?
Yes, we, we met, Mr. Watise, Watise, Watisa, the developer and myself, the, the person, the neighbor that complained about infringing upon his property did not show up for the meeting, but the contractor did make sure that he would take the tree that fell, and it didn't, it wasn't cut down, it fell because it was rotted, and he was also going to take care of the, the disturbance in the ground as you come in the driveway on Tyre Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Kenny?
My apologies for being late, sorry.
No problem. So any other discussion before I call on the, on the ratification? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Matson?
Abstain.
Oh, you're abstaining, okay. Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Reyes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye, I read through the material.
Mr. Porcelli?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz?
Aye.
Ms. Kalunian?
Aye.
And Chairman Flynn also says aye. Okay, other new business for discussion and our action, we have a public informal meeting on master plan, Covington Road Solar, owners Covington Realty LLC, Rockwood Realty LLC, applicant Revity EPC LLC. It's a proposed 3.3, or 5.3 megawatt DC solar energy project, AP 85 watts 1 and 5.3 and AP 92 watt 1 zone RR 2. So before I open up the public meeting, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have the, the developer come on and explain the project. For the audience, I was told when you want to talk, after I open the public meeting, you just hit star 9. So that way we'll know you're waiting in the queue to talk. Yes?
That is only for the people who call in.
Who call in. If you call in on the phone, you hit star 9.
Right.
Okay. So if the applicant would like to start and proceed with his presentation?
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palumbo from Revity Energy, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Palumbo, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Palumbo? Where is, where is Mr. Murray?
He should be on, I was waiting for him to come on.
You have to be. He was here, he's gone. I, I, I need you to be represented by legal counsel here this evening in order to proceed with this matter. And unfortunately, we're going to have to wait. Would you agree with me, Dave?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to call Mr. Murray right now, see what happened, because I just hold on one second. Hello?
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I apologize, I don't know what happened, I'm calling in on my phone right now, try and reconnect.
Okay.
Are we ready?
Mr. Flynn? Yes, they can proceed now.
Okay, Mr. Murray, if you're, if you're ready to proceed, go ahead.
Yes, I will, I apologize to the commission, the, everything was fine, and then I lost you. So I'm calling in on my phone right now, try and rejoin later over the internet. For the record, my name is Robert Murray, I'm an attorney with the firm of Tafta McSally, located at 21 Garden City Drive in Cranston. And I represent Revity Energy, which is the applicant for the major land development project under consideration tonight. This proposal is for a approximately 5.3 megawatt solar array field. And the property in question is off Covington Road, and there are two property owners involved, Covington Realty LLC and Rockwood Realty LLC. I'm going to cover some information that many people, you know, are already familiar with, I, I ask you to bear with me, since this is the first official public informational meeting. We have tonight several witnesses to offer the commission and the public to outline and explain this proposal. And we'll try and be expeditious in our time. But this is an important project, obviously, to the town and my client, and certainly we want to be respectful of the neighbors and, and work with all town officials. This property off Covington Road, as many people know, is zoned RR 2, which is a rural residential zone under the Coventry zoning ordinance. The, before this evening, long before this evening, the town council through your zoning ordinance had determined that a major solar installation is a permitted use in this zone subject to the approval of a special use permit from the zoning board review. And if we're successful at this level, at the master plan level, then we would proceed forward with an application to the zoning board review. The, I've represented Revity Energy on several solar projects, and the principal of the, of the company will be speaking momentarily. I, I want to note, under our, under your zoning code, you know, I've heard some discussion in recent weeks that solar arrays are really a manufacturing use or an industrial use. To be clear, under your zoning code, there are industrial uses and there are manufacturing uses, solar installations are considered neither one. They are under a separate section of the zoning code, which includes transportation and utilities and communications. So the town council has determined that within this RR 2 zone, the major solar array would be permitted, provided a special use permit is obtained. I just want to mention to the board, we've, we've, we've had some preliminary discussions with you and through you in recent weeks. We've, we had the, on May, on May 27th, as you recall, we had a pre-application, very brief pre-application review of this matter. The board chose to schedule a site visit, that occurred on June 3rd of this year, and we appreciate those members that were able to attend. As promised to the commission, Revity Energy indicated that we would reach out to the neighbors and the butters to try and share information with them and answer questions. I'm pleased to say that on July 14th, a week ago, Tuesday, we had two information sessions in the field with neighbors. We invited, everybody who got a notice of this meeting was invited to the information sessions, we did one at 5:00 and one at 6:30 to try and accommodate people's schedules, and we had a good, a good turnout and a, and a healthy discussion with the neighbors that evening. Because of the concerns about, you know, COVID-19, we off, we also hosted a Zoom meeting this past Monday evening, July 20th, and we had a number of new neighbors or butters reach out for information through that process. The bottom line is, my client, that's reflective of our approach when we go into a community to try and share information and be accessible. And we want to thank both the commission and the neighbors who took time to learn exactly what this project is about. I'm sure tonight, we're going to impart more information, there will be questions, additional questions, and we will certainly stand ready to assist the commission in answering those. Before I introduce Mr. Palumbo, I just want to mention that this is really the first formal step in this process. As a major land development, state law and your subdivision regulations set forth that at the master plan level, which is a conceptual level of detail, this is a public information meeting, we will follow that up with a meeting before the zoning board review for a special use permit. We will obtain our outside agency approvals such as DEM. And at some point, we would then come back to the planning commission for a preliminary plan approval, and that's way, that's after we do all the detailed engineering that we have not yet done yet. And ultimately, we would get final approval, and that would lead towards a, a building permit. So that's the, for the public, that's the process, we have to go. Every step of the way, there is public involvement and notice, and there will always be a healthy dialogue between the applicant and the community. This project falls under your zoning ordinance as a major solar installation, which, just for the record, is intended to, is a project intended to generate and sell electricity to a utility company in an area of at least 40,000 square feet. So that's the, that's the box we fit under, it's intended that the electricity that's generated through this project will be sold to connect to and sold to National Grid. I'll, I'll come back later on this evening, there are some waivers that we submitted through the planning director that, some of the detailed information that wouldn't be appropriate at the master plan level, we could talk about those waivers later. But at this point, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to introduce Mr. Ralph Palumbo. He is the principal of Revity Energy, and he is going to share some information with the commission about this project and his company. Ralph, can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Chairman, commission members, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. My name is Ralph Palumbo, I'm the principal and president of Revity Energy. Revity Energy is a company based in Rhode Island. The principles, Revity Energy and its principles have developed approximately 90 megawatts of solar in Rhode Island and the surrounding states. From a scale standpoint, it's approximately 250,000 panels up and, and running successfully, providing very significant electricity savings to counterparties, municipalities, hospitals, and other institutions. This, this particular project, as Bob said, is 5.3 megawatt project, is, is a very attainable project for Revity Energy. We've done projects as small as quarter megawatt and as big as 20, 21 megawatts, and developing, and we're developing projects much larger scale of it. We have a vast amount of experience in developing and constructing and owning and operating assets. When we construct the assets, we use all tier one equipment with high quality equipment and high quality warranties. The, the systems are built principally by IBEW Local 99 Electricians under the Department of Labor laws. JF Inagro Corporation will be doing the site work for us, he does all our site work for us. Most likely mass electric company will be the electricians on, on the, on site. There really will be no other major subcontractors, there'll be minor subcontractors for some electrical equipment, medium voltage electrical equipment. The system will be tied into the National Grid lines on Covington Road. We've progressed with National Grid and have a feasibility study and a directional path, and once we have our impact study, we'll, we'll share it with the commission. And we have a final, final directions and plans from National Grid. This project, site work will take approximately three months. In the electrical installation, will take from six to eight months, depending, the variation, depending on weather conditions. So, and once, you know, once, once completed, there's a very intense inspection and safety program with National Grid before the system is, is tied in and plugged into, to the National Grid system. We've successfully tied in over 20 systems in Rhode Island now with National Grid, and out of state, another, probably would say, another 10 systems out of state, so very experienced in taking a very safe approach and a very successful approach to starting, progressing and completing projects of this nature. That is my presentation, and thank you for this opportunity.
Bob? Okay, thank you, Mr. Palumbo. Anybody else from the developer would like to speak?
I believe Bob had to jump off, this is David Russo with the pre-engineering. I'm a professional engineer with the pre-engineering, I've worked with Revity and probably upwards of 100 megawatts of solar throughout the state of Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut. This parcel has frontage on Covington Road, it's, it's approximately a total of 101 acres. We have surveyed the southern properties of the development, the northern property is underway of being surveyed. As Mr. Murray stated, it's zone RR 2. The wetlands on the property have been, on the southern property, have been flagged by Natural Resource Services, Mr. Scott Rabidu. He's also in process of flagging some additional wetlands on the, the northern end of the site. The topography of the site, it varies through the site. There's some undulation in, in some certain areas of the site, and I think a lot of that has to do with the former earthwork that was done in this area. There is some gravel operation located to the north of the property, and then further south, there's some historical disturbance in that area that looks like it was associated with the gravel operation. The property has two existing access drives. One is located on the far north of the property, and there's another one on the, I'll call it the middle section of the property. The neighborhood meeting was at the northernmost access, and that's utilized for the gravel operation, and the southern access is also used for the gravel operation. The applicant and the owners are, you know, assuming this development went through, proposing to eliminate the southern existing accessway from being utilized with the gravel operation and just strictly utilized for the solar, and then any of the residents that utilize that access point. So the applicant's proposing a 5.3 megawatt solar array. This is a ground-mounted system, it'll be surrounded by a chain link fence. The area within the fence will be a grass area. That area will be maintained by the solar developer, the periodic maintenance of the grass, and they check the, the electrical, electrical equipment on site and the panels and the arrays. The, they're all ground-mounted panels, they sit, the front lip sits about three feet off the ground, and the rear sits approximately nine to 10 feet. The plan that we've submitted to the, to Plan Department is a conceptual layout, we have not done any engineering on this site. Some of the engineering that we'd have to do, we'd have to complete test pits on the site. That's for two reasons, one is for the drainage components that we would have to design, assuming we receive all approvals, we'd have to go to DEM. And we'd have to present a drainage design to DEM that met all the state requirements. And per the state requirements, we're not, we cannot increase stormwater flow to any of the surrounding properties or the wetlands. And we have to meet a bunch of other high standard water quality elements that they require. That would be reviewed by DEM. It would also be reviewed by the town engineer, so there'd be multiple levels of review if we got to that stage. The buffering on the property that we have shown here, we've shown a 40-foot, which is the lighter green, 40-foot existing vegetated buffer, so anything within that 40 feet is to remain. Some of the neighbors mentioned, some of the areas are scarce, where there's, you know, there's really not a lot of existing vegetation, and that's something the landscape architect will look at, those certain areas, and if they have to infill those areas, they will. We've also shown a conceptual 20-foot landscape buffer area, which the landscape architect will talk more about, but conceptually in that area, and it could increase depending on what's designed, it could be plantings, it could be a berm with plantings on it, and the goal of that would be to visually screen the solar array for this, to the surrounding properties. There is, we've walked the site, we haven't done any testing, there are some areas of, you know, large rock, some potential areas of ledge, but you can't tell without doing additional testing. It's not the applicant's intent, the first, when we do the design, that we don't look to blast, if we can work around that, we will. So that's not our first, first option. If it were needed, they would be required to fi, follow all state regulations and go through the state fire marshal. The utilities for the site will be brought in through the site access drive, utilizing the existing site access. Those will include, National Grid hasn't completed their design, but it'll more than likely include four to five above-ground utility poles on that access drive, and then from there, it would go underground into the solar development. There may, on Covington Road, there may be additional improvements on the utility poles on Covington Road, National Grid will determine that, and more than likely, that would be replacement of the existing poles on that site, on that, on that area.
Dave, are you all set for now?
Yeah, I think that covered most of it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Murray again, I, again, I apologize for the technical difficulty. I had some other questions of Mr. Palumbo that, but David kind of jumped in in the void, so I apologize. We'll go back to Mr. Palumbo in a second. But David, while you're available, I have a few follow-up questions. The, just in terms of your experience, how many solar projects have you worked on?
I've worked on upwards of 100 megawatts, the number itself, maybe 40 to 50 projects.
And, you know, obviously, in the development of this plan, it's before the commission tonight, you were familiar, you're familiar with the Coventry solar regulations?
That is correct.
And in, in preparation of the master plan submission, you reviewed those regulations to align the plan with the conditions that are set forth in the local ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And the, you, you touched upon a number of issues, I want to just go back on a couple of things. First, Russell, could I trouble you to put the plan back up? We working on it, Russell? There we go, thank you. David, I just, I just want to talk about some aspects of this plan. The, first of all, just to orient it, the top of the screen is north, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that is the land, the bottom half of about 45 acres is the land that's owned by Covington Realty, correct?
Correct.
And that's where the bulk of the panels are shown on the plan. Correct?
On the eastern side of that property.
Yes, and in addition, the land to the north is owned by Rockwood Realty, and Revity Energy is leasing a portion of that, of that property, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, at the bottom of the screen, at the south, we abut a neighborhood along what's known as Watercrest Court. And to the east are those residences along Covington Road, Covington Road, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And to the west, there's a road network over there, which I think it's called Teakwood Drive West. And that's on the other side of a substantial wetland as shown on the plan, is that correct? So the area that, that green area that's to the left of the panels shown on the plan before us, that's, that is an area that has been delineated by Mr. Rabidu's firm in terms of flagging what's called flagging the wetland area, is that correct?
That's correct. The green areas, the wetlands, the blue line that you see is the fifty foot regulated buffer that DEM requires. We're not proposing any work within any of the wetland areas or buffer areas.
Okay. And naturally, while we're here, there will be a requirement that we formally submit to DEM for a determination as, or wetlands permit that would be needed prior to further levels of review, like a preliminary plan submission, correct?
Correct. They would review our wetland flagging and they'd review our stormwater design and make sure it meets all their regulations.
And as part of that, we would compile what's called a soily erosion control plan, is that fair?
Yes, part of the DEM submittal, we have to prepare soil erosion control plan, which is for, mainly for construction, during construction, to make sure measures in place. So there's no erosion running off the site onto any budding properties or wetland areas.
Based on your experience in working in other projects, both solar and otherwise, the layout of these panels and the, with the identified flags from Natural Resource Services, are you comfortable that this depiction of panels as shown here ultimately will meet with the approval of DEM? Absence of minor change?
Yes.
Okay. Can we talk a little bit about the colors on this plan? John Cotter, our landscape architect's going to talk, but I just saw members of the public reviewing the plan and members of the commission. Just briefly describe what is the red outlined on the plan before us?
The red outline is the, the southern lot is, that's a class one survey line that we've completed a class one. The northern lot is a conceptual, based on best available information. So those are the property lines.
Okay. I'm getting some feedback on your, your audio, David. Are you, I don't know if the other members of the commission can hear, is it just me? Mr. Chairman, are you hearing him okay?
Yes, I am.
Okay, fine. Just stay close to the microphone, David, if you would. Could you describe the light green outline around the, around your site plan, what is that?
That light green area is a forty foot existing vegetated area that's to remain untouched. As I stated earlier, there are some areas, some of the abutters raised it at the neighborhood meeting and we are aware of them. There's some areas that even though it's called existing, the vegetation is scarce. So that the landscape architect will have to look at some of those areas.
And the, on my, on my laptop, it's more teal or aqua. What is the, the second green line next to that?
That's a, an area where we're proposing the landscape architect will put in some additional visual buffering. That could be double rows of plantings or it could be a, you know, a berm, a graded berm to create some height to visually shield the solar project. You know, without the engineering, it's hard to determine the best route to take. But the landscape architect will look at different options to visually screen the development.
Okay, and John, we'll talk about that a little more in a moment. The, the, am I correct, this, this solar array field will be surrounded by a fence?
Correct, it'll be surrounded by a fence.
And what is the height of that fence?
We have it as a seven foot high security fence. And DEM typically makes us raise it off the ground to allow small critters, critters to pass through the system.
So the, the height of the fence would be approximately seven feet?
Correct.
And there would be spacing left at the bottom for wildlife to traverse the panel area if they, if they desire, correct?
Correct.
Obviously, we're not talking about large wildlife, but we're talking about small, small critters, amphibian type animals. And that's usually a requirement of DEM in their wetland permit, is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, around the, the fence, will there be any type of perimeter road?
The perimeter road is typically inside the fence. There'll be a gate to access the system. And then we usually, we usually, we provide access around the site interior to the fence. The roadway, depending on when we speak with the fire department, it may not go around the whole system. It may just be a grass access way. But we'll have to work with the fire department on that.
And this is, this area is within the central Coventry Fire District. And, and I can tell the commission that I've, I have spoken both to the fire chief and fire marshal. And they will give us a review of more detailed plans when, when we're ready, Mr. Chairman. David, just a couple of other items. The, Russell, if I could ask you to kind of lower, I'd like the southern part of the, the project, if I could. David, to our south, we have neighboring properties along Watercrest Court, is that correct?
Correct.
And on your plan, just for demonstrative purposes, you have some distances there with some arrows. Could you highlight or describe, just so we have a perspective of what type, type of distance we're talking from the panels to those yards or those structures?
So the distances that we have shown, so from AP seventy six, lot twenty seven, there's approximately three hundred and twelve feet from the rear of that house to the panels. We didn't survey those houses, so, you know, we consider it approximate, but there's about three hundred and twelve feet. And then as you go further east, we're showing there's about a hundred and fifty two feet from the fence to the existing vegetated area that's to remain. And then another next distance would be two hundred and eighty two feet from the rear of AP seventy six, lot twenty nine, to the closest panel. And then the next one down would be AP seventy six, lot thirty one. That's approximately three hundred and twenty four feet to the closest panel. And we've, we've added those dimensions, you know, around the site to the closest residents.
Okay. And just so we're clear, anything to the west where we have our flagged wetlands and going all the way towards Teakwood Park, Teakwood Drive West, that area will remain undisturbed. There, there is no activity planned for it. And those residents can be assured that there will be no, no activity, any solar activity behind there, is that correct?
That's correct. There's nothing proposed over there.
And while we don't show the dimensions for those residences along Covington Road, those area, those, those residences, we will obviously apply the same concern with neighbors and work with the, the abutters if they allow us in terms of landscape buffering and screening, is that correct?
Correct.
The, in the planning director's report, he, he identified that none of these parcels fall within a groundwater protection area, a natural heritage area, any type of groundwater overlay districts. You, you agree with that assessment, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Right. And while, while it was identified as a groundwater recharge area, the town engineer has determined that this proposed solar array would have no impact on the groundwater recharge area. And lastly, there are no, to your knowledge, any historically significant features or structures on this property, correct?
None to my knowledge, and I checked the comprehensive plan in Coventry and then none showed up on that map either.
My last, my last area of discussion, there is, just in terms of the town requirements, you are familiar with the setback requirements and area requirements in the RR two rural residential zone, correct?
Correct.
And we meet the minimum area of five acres and the street frontage of two hundred and twenty five feet, is that correct?
Correct.
And the front setback, rear setback and side setbacks as required in the ordinance are all met, is that correct?
Correct.
And most importantly, in the, in the RR two zone, there's a maximum lock coverage of fifteen percent for the solar installation. And we are, we are just under that or just at that lock coverage, correct?
That's correct. And, you know, like I said, when we complete the survey of the northern property, we'll adjust as needed to meet that requirement.
And, and, and lastly, the height requirement, as you stated, will, will, will be met at twelve feet, is that fair?
That's correct, yep.
Chairman, at this point, I won't believe I have any other questions of Mr. Russo. I would like to ask Mr. Palumbo to come back, but I, I know what your procedure is. Do you want to let commission members question Mr. Russo at this point or we're going to wait? He's going to be available.
Why, why don't you do your whole presentation? And then open it up to the board members if, if they want to wait till after the public hearing to speak or if they have something they want to be answered now.
Okay, that's fine. And well, with your permission, I'm just going to ask Mr. Palumbo to come back during my technical difficulty. There were a couple of areas I just wanted to discuss with him. He did a nice job outlining Rebity's background and experience. Mr. Palumbo, are you available with us?
I am.
Okay, just a couple of topics, and I apologize during the transition from my phone to the computer. I don't know if you discussed, if we are allowed to proceed forward here, what the time of construction would be, how long from building permit to completion approximately based on your experience?
Yeah, I did address that, Bob, and I said three months for site work and six to eight months for electrical system installation.
Okay. Well, at the risk of asking a question you already answered, did you get into, I, I know you may have discussed a number of panels, did you talk about the type of equipment?
No, I just classified as tier one equipment. There's approximately thirteen thousand panels for this, for the system, all tier one equipment. Panels, racking, inverters. Again, labor will be done by very skilled IVEW electrical electricians, licensed electricians with a very high grade safety program during construction.
And when we met with some of the neighbors and the other night, they were asking questions about the, you know, the safety of the panels, is there any toxicity involved? And that question has come up on other projects you've been involved in, correct?
Right.
And in fact, you have had Sage Environmental review the materials for construction of the solar panels. And if the board asks, we could provide documentation from Sage Environmental that the panels that you utilize are not expected to cause any environmental contamination to the soils or groundwater, is that fair?
Yes, that report is available as we sit here.
Okay, we, we'll provide it if asked. The, could you briefly discuss the life of this project you estimate is what, twenty five to thirty years?
The warranty on the major component tree is twenty five years. But with proper care and attention and high grade operations and maintenance programs, which we have high grade operations and maintenance program, it'll be thirty years, maybe thirty five years.
And most communities, including Coventry, have provisions in their solar ordinances that if the, if the project, the solar array were to be abandoned or discontinued, there is a process for the town and the neighbors to be assured that the panels would be removed. Could you briefly describe that process as you undertake it in other communities?
Yes. The process starts with the pre-engineering, very experienced in preparing decommissioning and process and cost analysis. I review it with the pre-engineering and make sure it covers all the bases. It covers removal of the equipment, restoration of the site and, and decommissioning of the interconnection equipment. We, we come up with the number, we collaborate with the town. They may have an engineer expert that will collaborate with the pre-engineering and myself. Once we agree on the number, it's typically in the twenty thousand per megawatt range typically. Some are less, some are more, depending on the conditions and the experts that are evaluating it. We then, once we agree to it, we create a tri-party escrow agreement between the town, the landlord and Revity Energy. In this case, I'm, I am co-landlord with Jovanagro, obviously Revity Energy. And the town will be the three parties. Essentially, the, what the number is established by the, and agreed upon between the town and Revity, we, we take cash, we deposit cash in a bank in an interest earning account and it's controlled by that tri-party escrow agreement, which essentially says that the end of the life of the system, the revenue is required to remove it, typically within a hundred and twenty days. If Revity does not remove it within a hundred and twenty days, the town takes possession of the cash escrow, escrow, excuse me, and executes, can hire someone to execute the removal and use the cash to execute the removal. It is obviously in my best interest to remove the system and we, we plan on doing that. My, this Revity Energy is a multi-generational business. My children are in this business and they will be here, running these programs, these projects and, and that due time. So we'll, you know, be equipped intellectually to do it and financially to do it.
Could we talk briefly about Covington Realty acquired the forty five or forty six acres at the southern end of this project, I believe in the middle of May, is that correct?
That's correct.
And prior to your acquisition of the property, did you cause a phase one environmental report to be undertaken for your, for your knowledge and benefit?
Yes.
And was the firm of Hoffman Engineering engaged for that purpose?
Yes.
And without getting into great detail, is it fair to say that there was nothing remarkable in that phase one report that would have given you pause to go forward with the acquisition?
That's correct.
And as far as what you know of the site and having walked it and having it inspected by the pre-engineering, there are no site conditions right now that would prohibit you from proceeding forward with the solar array, is that fair?
That is correct, and we've, we've done some test pits just to check soils and whatnot. So I'm very confident this is a site that is suitable for this development.
Just two areas last to talk about first. When we met with some of the neighbors, both on site and through the Zoom meeting, one of the questions came up that you are partnering with Mr. Van Agro and he does have a quarry to the north. Based on your involvement with him and your knowledge of his activities there, is it your understanding that there are no further plans to expand the quarry activity on that site?
Yes, and as a, we lease rest of the land, Bob. So, you know, in the, in the interior of the red lines that you see there, that's leased property. So there is no expansion capability there.
Thank you. One last area I just want to talk about, and I apologize, you touched upon it.
Job, Bob, I want to qualify, just clarify one thing. Mr. Van Agro and I are partners on the land, on the, the previously, the forty five acres, the forty two acres. We are now partners on the solar, Revity is, is a one hundred percent owner of the solar. Sorry to interrupt you, Bob.
No, no, thank you for the clarification. No, no, thank you for the clarification. The, um, um, one of the topics that I don't know if you touched upon, um, if you did, I apologize. Uh, we, we talk about this, these type projects not burdening, uh, the local tax base and tax and, and taxpayers. Uh, if you talked about it, I apologize, could you just go through, uh, uh, your, your view on these, uh, as beneficial to the town?
Uh, and thank you for bringing it up. I did not address it. So this, this project, uh, based on experience and assessments for the statewide ordinance for tax and solar systems and assessments on real property, uh, and the assessments on the interconnection upgrades that we will install for this fro- property, uh, within the town of Coventry. I, I expect this property to generate approximately forty-five thousand dollars of taxes per year, uh, and I would classify that as unburdened taxes. The, this particular system is, is self-contained and obviously we don't require, uh, any, uh, we don't create any burden on, on the, uh, town's school system, the town's, uh, uh, safety and protection, uh, units, meaning, meaning police and fire. Uh, no trash service, uh, or anything like that. So we, we run a very self-reliant, uh, system. Uh, we, we do, uh, it, uh, this is a little out of topic for this, but while I remember it, uh, we do provide a safety training program to, uh, the fire department and we do give the fire and police department access to the system through a lockbox, uh, on the gate. And they, so they can access it at any time in case, uh, of any, any type of emergency. Uh, I've never had that emergency, that type of emergency in all the systems that we've had, but we do provide that access.
My last area of inquiry, just, uh, because it came up with some of the neighbors, um, this, the energy to be generated by this project, uh, will be, uh, uh, sold, uh, to National Grid, correct?
It, it, it will be delivered and sold to National Grid under the net metering, um, program, commercial net metering program. Uh, the credits will, will go to, uh, the credits that I'm paid by, from National Grid will be, uh, consumed by a state agency.
And, and that's where I wanted to go. I, i- am I correct that you, uh, Revity Energy has entered into a net metering agreement with the Coventry Public School System?
We, uh, participated in an RFP and, uh, prevailed and were awarded the opportunity. No, I'm here. Can you hear me, Bob?
Yes, okay. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, uh, yeah, we participated in RFP and we were awarded, uh, the contract and we are in the, we are negotiating the net metering credit contract with the, the school committee's attorney as we speak.
So, so a couple of neighbors asked if, you know, if the, uh, if the neighbor, the neighboring properties or the immediate community around the project could benefit directly by it. You gave a good answer the other night on the Zoom call. Could you just go over that for the planning commission?
Yeah, the, the program that this system will operate under, uh, is very specific and, and limited to a class of eligible counterparties that includes all forms of government, state, federal, municipal, uh, hospitals, uh, universities and nonprofits. There is a program that, uh, residents can benefit from a community solar program. That particular program has a thirty-megawatt cap and has, uh, been fulfilled and there is no additional cap space in it now. Uh, I do anticipate, not this legislative season, but maybe next, that that cap space will be lifted and there will be opportunity for residents to participate in that.
Excuse me, gentlemen, can I interrupt for one second? Folks that are on this call, if you're not actively talking or part of the conversation, please mute your microphone. The background noise is very distracting and is very unprofessional. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Pal, I, I, I don't think I get into detail with Dave Russo on this, but because your knowledge of this, I just wanted to, um, blasting was a concern with some of the neighbors, uh, and is it fair to say that from Revity's perspective, blasting is an action of last resort when you're, you're constructing these projects?
It, it is fair to say. It's, it's expensive, uh, and, and, uh, time-consuming, uh, it does slow down the process, so it is the last resort. Uh, you know, i- if, if needed, you know, we're very skilled and, you know, we hire the, you know, the best blasting with the highest safety standards and we do recognize that, that they're our neighbors, uh, but, you know, i- i- Jay and Van Agro doing the site work, they have very substantial equipment and they can move substantial rocks and boulders. And if there was substantial ledge beneath the ground, we have techniques where we don't need to remove it. We can chip, chip the face off and we can drill in to stabilize the racking system right into the ledge. So we have a lot, there's a lot of optionality, uh, and blasting is, as does, as you say, is the last resort.
And, and if, and, and as I think Dave Russo did mention this, but there is, uh, a whole protocol that has to be followed with pre-inspections of surrounding properties within a certain radius. Uh, there are notifications to property owners and then there's post, uh, blast inspections that are required to be done. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Was that a yes?
That's correct. It was yes, correct.
I apologize. Sometimes I, I'm losing the response. I apologize. Okay, I have no other questions of Mr. Russo, uh, Mr. Palumbo at this point, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for the kind of disjointed presentation there, but, uh, uh, with your permission now, I'd like to ask John Carter, our landscape architect, uh, to be, uh, to be available for questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Mari.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John, are you online?
I am, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, earlier today, I did share with, uh, Mr. Crossman, uh, uh, resumes for both David Russo, our professional engineer at Dupree Engineering and John Carter. Uh, John is a registered land architect, uh, registered landscape architect in Rhode Island. Uh, so I did share those, so I'd ask that they just be made part of the record. Um, uh, John, uh, you're familiar with the, uh, the property in question on Calvin Town Road in Coventry?
I am, yes. I have visited it and, uh, walked inside it and portions of it and portions of the perimeter of it.
And you've worked with Revity Energy and other solar projects?
I have, yes, on several.
And you're, 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 you're sensitive and understand, uh, the balance that we try and strike with the budding property owners in terms of adequate screening and proper buffering?
I'm quite aware of that, yes.
Okay, and, yeah, so obviously you've appeared before other boards and commissions around Rhode Island to testify about, uh, landscape projects like this.
I have over, uh, thirty years. I've had extensive, uh, testimony in front of zoning, planning and, uh, other regulatory agencies, yes.
The, uh, on the screen right now is, uh, what's, uh, been identified as a, uh, landscape plan prepared by your office, is that correct?
It is.
And, uh, there's, there's actually two sheets. We're going to start with this first one here. Um, could you, uh, in narrative fashion, I'm going to let you, because you did a nice job at the, uh, meetings before, just briefly describe, uh, the approach, uh, that Revity Energy and your office takes in, uh, on projects like this? And talk a little bit about the, uh, specific, uh, plan.
I will do that, yeah. Thank you, Bob. Uh, uh, members of the commission, Mr. Chairman, uh, John Carter and a registered landscape architect in, uh, Rhode Island, Massachusetts and Connecticut. Um, I, uh, as Bob asked, I've been practicing for almost thirty years now, uh, residential, commercial, uh, on solar projects and forth. Um, I, you know, the essence of these is always, uh, that I know that the neighbors and the butters and, and people in the area have concerns. Uh, primarily the concern is visual and can we see it? What will it look like? Uh, how would it impact our current quality of life in terms of the visual impact? Um, I'd love to be able to say that, uh, we'll hide it, but I've never said that and I won't say that here. Uh, I think that, uh, that would be an unrealistic promise. But we do have, uh, quite a few techniques that are very effective in screening and buffering, which is typically what the ordinance asks us to do. Um, the site currently is, uh, vegetated with deciduous trees, uh, hot deciduous hardwood trees, oaks and maples and, uh, white pines, which is an evergreen. Uh, the, about fifteen percent in the northwest corner of the proposed panel area is actually, uh, currently a gravel bank. I'm not sure if that area is being mined or not, but it, it was at one time. Um, the homes that you can see on this plan that's in front of you, uh, on the south, there's about six homes that directly above the site and, um, to the, uh, southeast, there's three homes, I believe there's four lots, but one of them is an access, uh, point. Uh, so there's three homes and then, uh, the northeast, there's seven homes. And then to the northwest, kind of off by itself, there's a, a home, uh, that, thank you, uh, for point, Russell's pointing at. Uh, the remainder of the site is, uh, is treed. Uh, the predominantly, the western portion is, uh, covered in deciduous trees, evergreen trees and expansive wetland. Um, so, again, the, the, the issue is, you know, what do, how, how do we address the visual impacts? Well, this particular site actually, uh, offers some opportunities and I'm a little bit, uh, more able to, to feel good about promising some sort of resolution because there's a, a limited number of homes. Uh, I know they're all each individually important, but there's not to the, to the people living there and I'm not minimizing that, but there's, it's, there's not, you know, thirty or fifty or a hundred homes. So what I've proposed and I've discussed it with Revity, uh, who I'm working for, and they're certainly open-minded and agreeable, is that we could address the visual impact or the potential visual impacts uh, on a home-by-home basis. Uh, I wouldn't not walk on a property without people's permission, of course, but we would be making an offer, uh, through Mr. Mari probably at some point, uh, to meet the people, uh, the owners on the site, on their, on their backyards. In essence, it's all backyards. And seeing, oh, where the potential views are and then suggesting, uh, ways that we could possibly uh, mitigate the view, maybe in some cases entirely obscure the view. Um, as Dave Russo pointed out, uh, when he was walking you through the site plan, the lighter green is a forty-foot existing buffer. So that area will remain and that will be the limit of disturbance and there won't be any disturbance within the forty feet. Now, he did also point out that there's some areas that are, uh, uh, currently don't have vegetation or have thin vegetation and we'll see them and, and we'll be able to address that. Uh, the additional twenty feet, which is outside the required width of the buffer, but, uh, is being proposed by Revity, gives us an area that we can do some alternative, uh, methods to try to help uh, obscure the panels from the homes. It's important to keep in mind, because people sometimes will say, well, can you move it further away? Can you have wider buffers? It's not the width of the buffer, uh, typically, uh, that is effective. It's not incrementally more effective by making it twenty percent wider, fifty percent wider. Uh, it's really the density of the buffer. And, um, so in some cases, you can have a hundred feet of deciduous trees and be able to see through them. Uh, so what, within the twenty feet, what we're going to address, uh, or propose, excuse me, is a variety of, um, methods depending on which one would be, which would be the most effective on a particular site. And, uh, Russell, would you mind going to the second page of my plan set? It's a couple of renderings. There you go. Thank you. Great, so. Yep, that's good too, thanks. So, um, if, if you can see what we have up on the screen, the top two photos, this is another solar project. It's not even in, uh, Coventry. It's in another community. Um, thank you. The, the top left one, you can see through those trees and see a, a gray sort of blob back there. That's a home. And I'm standing where a proposed pan- a panel was proposed, looking through a vegetated buffer and saying, okay, that's a substantial buffer. Uh, however, there are areas you can see through it. And then the right photo is, uh, represents planting, supplemental planting and being sensitive to evergreen, being sensitive to deer damage, which is a big issue, uh, today. We propose to use native type plantings, uh, white pines, uh, spruce uh, and some other that are evergreen and, and are able to be established. So we refer to as supplemental planting, infill planting, but plugging the holes is another way to say it. Uh, so that's the technique that we would use. And then if you can just page up a little, uh, so I can, we, everybody can see the bottom, there you go. Um, so in that case, what you're seeing is, uh, there's a residence, there's a twenty-foot, uh, excuse me, a forty-foot wide buffer of existing vegetation. This is all on our site. People have on their own property. On some of these sites, they have extensive vegetation, but we're just addressing what we can do on this site. The twenty feet of supplemental buffer as it's labeled and you see down below, we're proposing, uh, that the soil be burned up, uh, that evergreen plantings be done, that a fence be installed. So sometimes it's one, sometimes it's a combination of all. Um, obviously, something opaque and like, uh, like, uh, like the earth, which would be burned up and seeded and vegetated, uh, and allowed to, to sort of grow back naturally. Uh, a fence would be a solid opaque screen and that may be effective more than anything in some places. Then we've got the opportunity to put supplemental planting in also. Um, so those are sort of the techniques that we would be, uh, presenting and I think that, uh, as I said, given the opportunity to sort of do a, a, a site-by-site basis, um, really gives us the opportunity to make this thing work and hopefully be able to satisfy uh, the owners of, of the homes. Um, the rest of the site is vegetated with a, uh, conservation mix and it's a, a low-growing seed mix, primarily fescues. Uh, it's put together by Allen Seed Store out in Exeter. Um, and it kind of minimizes the need to mow, but it stabilizes the ground uh, and does it in a, in a natural fashion by allowing this sort of field grass to grow back in. So that's, uh, pretty much the proposal. We're at a master plan level. Dave Russo pointed out, it has not been engineered. So I don't really think there's any benefit at this point in the process to be meeting with people uh, until we know exactly where and how high and so forth the proposed panels would be, at which point we could make some really good, solid decisions. Uh, but at master plan level, this is, we think, a good point of discussion, representation of what we've done before and, uh, hopefully gives the board something to, uh, consider.
Thank you, John. Uh, yeah, I just want to follow up on one point. Uh, uh, obviously we have not yet done any detailed, uh, top- topographical, uh, study of the site. Uh, even though we've walked it and we're familiar with it, um, the topography comes into play in terms of the types and level of screening that would be encountered, uh, on a case-by-case basis. Is that fair?
It is fair. And in this particular case, it's actually, uh, works to our advantage because, uh, the site slopes in a, slopes in a northerly fashion, um, down. So it's about elevation three hundred and fifty feet, uh, on the south end and about three hundred and ten in the north. So it's about a forty-foot slope down from, uh, just exactly as, as it's being pointed to. Um, so, you know, it's more difficult with sloping off. because then it's higher and it's more to screen. So the fact that it's sloping down does come into play and it's a positive rather than negative in this case.
And the offer that we've outlined here, when I say offer, our position is, you know, as we gather more detailed information and with the cooperation of area property owners, your firm would do a site by site visit. And once we understand how high the panel may be in their view shed, that we would work to try and cover it or disguise it so that it was not obtrusive to their view. Is that fair?
That's correct. Yes.
I have no other questions, John Cotter, at this point, Mr. Chairman. I think it's, you know, at the master plan level, I think we've tried to provide as much information as we could. And I think that the commission understands the approach that we take with, on all these projects with neighbors. With your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Tom Sweeney, who is our real estate expert, to join us. I know, Tom, can you hear me? Unmute Tom if you're there. Bear with me one second because he just text me. Here with Mr. Chairman. Just told him to unmute on my phone. Oh, he says when he's unmuting it, it disconnects him. Let's, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, maybe we just give Heather a two minute break and she can, while he jumps back in.
Mr. Murray, can you hear me now?
Tom's here. Heather, are you good?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the screen with us now is Thomas Sweeney. He's a, he owns Sweeney Real Estate and Appraisal Company in Providence. I've known Mrs. Sweeney. He has testified before many boards and commissions with me and against me. Mrs. Sweeney, am I correct that you've prepared a short project as the real estate expert?
I have, Mr. Murray.
And attached to your report, we provided the board, just for background, your resume or curriculum vitae, which outlines your licensing and experience. Is that fair?
That is correct.
And it's self evident, you've testified before other planning commissions and zoning boards around the state of Rhode Island for many years.
I have. It's approximately thirty seven years this year.
And you were engaged by Revity Energy to, and we've done this on other projects, to, one of the questions we get from neighbors is, will this project impact my real estate values? And you've been engaged to outline some thoughts for that based on your research and your knowledge. And could you briefly describe your findings for the planning commission?
Yes. At your request, Mr. Murray, I did inspect the property driving in Teakwood Drive over to Watercrest Court and then back out and up Calventown Road to the northern edge of the property, taking into account both the property itself and the surrounding property uses. In addition to that, I've done for this and other projects, some study or research. This is one of those projects or one of those types of uses that while it's relatively new here in Rhode Island and the local regional area, it has become prevalent throughout the country. And while there were no specific studies for here in Rhode Island, there were three studies done over the last three years on three other projects in other states, North Carolina, Illinois and Indiana. And while those may seem like far away places, the type of process that the appraiser utilized in these studies is what's called paired sales analysis, in which you take a property or properties that are located close to, in proximity to a solar array. And the ones that we're talking about in these studies are significantly larger than the one we're talking about here. And then you compare the sales prices of those properties to properties that are not in proximity to a solar array and determine if there is any impact. I believe the greatest indicator in this is the fact, as has been testified, if you can screen these projects and provide buffers, there really truly is no number or discernible impact of a solar array, as long as the property is properly screened as is proposed here. In my opinion, the use is complimentary as it is a very low intensive use. You don't hear it. You don't see it. It is behind the buffer. The buffer is maintained and in my opinion, it will have no negative impact on the use and enjoyment or value of the surrounding properties.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. His presentation was intended to be brief. He'll be available for questions from the commission, but he has submitted a report as part of the record. And with your permission, I'll move on from Mr. Sweeney at this point. Mr. Chairman, it had been my, I didn't know at what point we'd get in the evening. Our next witness was intended to be Mr. Edward Pimentel. Mr. Pimentel is a land use consultant. He has provided a report to the department and to the commission. He is, he happens to be the zoning official in East Providence. And he does have a private consulting business at night. And I've worked with him on many projects. Tonight happens to be zoning night in East Providence. And between operating with the pandemic and Zoom and everything else, he's going to be tied up there a little while. He just text me. He's still there. With your permission, his report speaks for itself. I would just like to highlight a few of his comments and findings. One of the considerations when the board is reviewing an application like this is determination whether or not the intended use is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. We have a zoning ordinance, which is more current than your comprehensive plan. I understand from Mr. Crossman that you're in the process of updating it. I know these things take time, but Coventry does have a rather dated comprehensive plan. So you do for an update. And I know that'll be done in due course. But from our perspective as an applicant, we don't believe what's proposed here tonight is inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. And that's a major consideration. The, the plan as it stands today, you know, was, you know, really predated when the focus, both at the state and local levels now, is looking at renewable energy and energy needs. And that discussion becomes an important element in, and will be in your new plan as you move forward with the commission and the town council to adopt a new plan when it's ready. That is now the state energy office and statewide planning expects communities will have a component in their comprehensive plan. So we look at the existing plan and we see that while it doesn't specifically say, refers to solar energy or renewable energy, we find nothing in the existing plan that would be inconsistent with our intended use. I know in the planning director's report, he did a very nice job outlining the consistency argument. And I'll let that stand on its own. It is supplemented by Mr. Pimentel's efforts. The overriding consideration for me is that, you know, in my position is that the zoning ordinance is really the controlling document here. Your town council through amendments and a well fought out approach to renewable energy has codified standards and a process and expectations, what a solar array, whether it's minor or major, would be composed of and how one would proceed forward with permitting. The state energy guidance handbook encourages these type activities. And as all our witnesses have testified tonight, I'm absolutely convinced that, and I've done this in other communities, solar facilities can be cited in areas like this. This is a rural residential area. I totally understand that. Your code does not qualify this as manufacturing or industrial. It falls under transportation, communications and utilities and is a conditional permitted use. And when you go through all of Mr. Pimentel's report, as I'm sure you will, you know, he finds that it is, we can have a healthy balance between the residential area surrounding this with proper screening and buffering to allow the major solar installation. So if Mr. Pimentel was here, he would be much more eloquent if we proceed forward to the zoning board review for a special use permit. He will testify and summarize his findings. He did touch upon the special use permit standards in his report. Mr. Chairman, at this point, we don't have any other witnesses. We've gone a little while here. We thank you for your attendance and listening. At some point in the evening, I would like to just briefly make some summarizing remarks. Within our application, I did allude to it earlier. We have identified through Dupree Engineering a number of waivers that we're seeking at this level. Nothing that is inappropriate in terms of our master plan submission. It's a level of detailed information that would follow following submissions for DM permits in graded detail that would come at a preliminary plan level. I think the planning director outlined them all. And, but as far as I'm concerned, the application and plans that we submitted to date, subject to your review and questions, does meet the standards and requirements for a master plan submission and would be in order for approval. But I will, I'll have a few other comments later in the evening. With that, Mr. Chairman, it's your meeting. Do you want to ask questions now? I know we have some members of the public listening in, whatever your desire is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Murray. Normally, and Mr. Pimentel probably will have time to jump in later in this meeting if, you know, someone from the audience would like to ask him some questions.
That would be appreciated.
Normally what we do now, before I open up the public hearing, I'll ask the board if they would rather speak, you know, to any of the concerns that they heard after reviewing your presentation or would they rather me open up public hearing? And then we can hold that back our questions till after the public is addressed. So any board members would want to speak now or do they want to wait till after I get through the public hearing?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I just want to say it was an excellent presentation.
Okay, Miss Lister. Okay, it looks, I'm going to open up public hearing.
Heather, do you want to take a break before we stop public hearing?
If I could, that would be great. I just need minutes.
Absolutely. We'll take five minute break?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Could everyone please mute your mics before you leave? Please mute your mics before you leave. Sandy, Ron.
What?
Please mute your mic before you leave, just so we don't pick up background.
How do I do that?
Where the little microphone icon is. Click on it and you'll see a red line go through it.
Sandy, lower left hand corner of your screen.
I just muted you, Sandy. I did it myself. Never mind.
Mr. Rosinkowski, are you back?
I'm here.
Okay. Does it look like Mr. Paselli is the only one not here? Oh, Glenn's not here either.
I'm back.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Russell, are you going to handle the attendees and bringing them in and out?
I was. Now, I wanted to talk to you about that. All I need to do is just hit allow to talk. I don't have to bring them in as a participant.
Correct.
Right. And I have two hands waved right now, and I'll just scroll down through the list.
Correct. Always start at the top. That's the first one, and they can, their hands are raised in order.
Okay.
So if you have any problems, I will assist you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Flynn, it's all yours.
Okay, for everybody listening and participating, before I open up the public hearing, if you do have a phone, you have to hit star nine if you are on just with a phone. Everybody will have an opportunity to speak. This is very important to all of us, and we want to, we want to hear all your comments. And I'm going to open up public hearing. We're going to address them one at a time. So the professionals from the applicant will answer the questions. Normally, we do them as a whole, but because we don't want people asking a question and have to wait two hours to get back on. So we're going to do them one at a time, and then we're going to get through this, but bear with us.
Mr. Chairman, also ask them to say their name, spell their last name, and state their address for the record, please.
Yes. Say your name, spell your name, and say your address for the record, please. Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome, sir.
I'm going to open up public hearing now. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to open public hearing from Carl.
Okay, Carl, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Is that Mr. Ray's second?
Second by Mr. Kenny.
Okay, Mr. Kenny. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to open up public hearing, Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Rosinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ray's?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Paselli?
Aye.
Ms. Luke Woods? Ms. Luke Woods?
You're muted, Sandy.
She didn't know how to mute her.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Kalunian? An aye from chairman, and public hearing is officially open now, so you can proceed.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to look at the list. First on our list, we have a Michelle Willett. I'm going to bring her in, and let's see. Michelle, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear?
Yes, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Michelle Olet. That's M.I.C.H.E.L.E. Last name is O.U.E.L.L.E.T.T.E. I live at 54 Calvin Town Road.
Okay, do you have some questions, Ms. Olet?
Yes, I do. Actually, the presentation answered most of them. I just have two questions. The notifications that went out, is that just for the immediate neighbors? Or like how far down? We're about a half a mile.
Thousand foot radius on this?
I'm sorry?
I believe it's a thousand foot radius on the notification. Am I correct?
It is, sir. It's a thousand foot.
Okay. All right. That answers that. My last question is basically for all of you. Calvin Town Road with, if we're looking at probably nine months to a year of more heavy trucks coming down this road, does the town have any plan to resurface it once all this is done? Because we, it's really taking a beating with all the construction around here with these trucks coming up and down.
Calvin Town Road is on a schedule to be resurfaced, but because of the COVID, I'm not sure if that's going to be held up, but it is planned to be resurfaced.
Okay, I would presume they would do that after this project, though, right?
I would, I would hope so.
Yeah, because it wouldn't make sense to do it and then have all these heavy trucks. I imagine there are going to be really large trucks coming with these panels and everything. So, okay, thank you. That answered my question.
Okay, thank you for your free question.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I have a, I just have a first name, Michelle. I'm going to allow her to talk now. Michelle, can you hear us? Please unmute yourself. Michelle? Are you there, Michelle? Michelle, can you hear us? All right. You know what? I'm going to, I'm just going to jump to the next one, if that's okay with the chair.
Absolutely. We can get back to her if she can get back on.
Okay. The next one is a phone number. Last four digits are six, three, eight, eight. Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, I can.
There you go. Please state your name and address.
Yes, hi. Yep, my name is Lewis Matthews. I live at One Watercrest Court. Did you, did you hear me? Yes. Go ahead and proceed. Okay. All right. So I had a couple of questions. Number one, had the property not been merged with the property from Vinagro, they wouldn't have had the capacity to put in this solar field. And then Vinagro is also the company that's going to do the construction. That seems a little odd to me, like maybe there's something going on there. Number two, I don't want to see this thing in my backyard. Number three, I would ask Mr. Palumbo and Mr. Murray and the landscape architect and everybody else that testified, Mr. Sweeney, why don't you guys buy some property and put this in your backyards? Why do you want to put it in mine? Number, number four, we all know that if you're talking about a 5.4 megawatt substation, we're going to need new poles going down Calvin Town Road. And then there's going to be all new wiring and infrastructure. As the other woman stated, the roads are going to get messed up, trucking. Anybody that lives in Coventry knows that Coventry is a gigantic piece of stone. So the fact that, that we're talking about that there'll be no blasting kind of mesmerizes me because you can't dig six inches in Coventry without hitting stone. So now we're talking about blasting. We're talking about erosion. I did send Mr. Crossman a file from a gentleman named Douglas Doe that lived across the street from the Lipid Hill Project in Cranston and documented the, the site and how the construction went and just the, you know, which was performed by the same company. And that's a disaster over there. Has anybody had a chance to look at that? Is that all your questions, Mr. Matthews? I can turn it over to the applicant's experts. Well, and then, you know, property values, we finally are starting to get some property values back in Coventry. And I don't believe that getting an assessment from Iowa means anything to Coventry. And again, I don't see any benefit to this solar farm, to the town of Coventry, other than to the people that have the property and are going to get the tax refunds and the tax credits because of the refundable energy, renewable energy. I just don't see where this makes any sense for Coventry whatsoever. Okay, Mr. Matthews? I think I pretty much gave you my opinion that I definitely 100% against this. Okay, well taken. And I'll turn that over to the applicant if he wants to answer some of them questions. Mr. Murray?
Sure. Very quickly, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I can address all of them, but I was trying to take notes. The dislocation happens to be adjacent to property that Mr. Vinagro owns. The Lacombe family owned the 46 acres that Calvin Town Realty acquired. And there was an opportunity to merge, not merge, but work with Mr. Vinagro's property. Mr. Palumbo stated, he has had a longstanding business relationship with Mr. Vinagro on many of his solar projects. Mr. Vinagro's company does do some of the site and excavation work. The, you know, there's nothing nefarious here. It just so happens that this property was identified by Revody Energy and had an opportunity to acquire it, and it just happened to be next to the, the Rockwood Realty property. The question about wiring and poles, we have not yet done a formal interconnection agreement with National Grid. We have a sense of where the connection would be made on Calvin Town Road and what direction it would head. There are, the operative word in the wiring or the connection is three-phase wiring. And we think it's relatively nearby, and that's why this is an attractive opportunity for an interconnection. There are, I will, I will acknowledge that there are instances where sometimes with three-phase wiring, National Grid has to install a new pole to get proper separation between their single-phase wiring and their, their three-phase wiring. So the pole gets, is slightly larger. It's basically a replacement pole. It is a wooden pole, just like there. And frankly, my experience or observation is that after, after it's done, you know, you're driving down the streetscape, you wouldn't even notice it's, it's, it's a pole. That's just my opinion. The, the blasting issue, I understand is a sensitive one. And I'll, I'll acknowledge that there probably are parts of Coventry that, you know, have quite a bit of stone. We don't, we have not yet done the technical analysis yet on this entire site. I referred to blasting being a last resort. There are other ways to, the, the only reason you need to blast or affect the soil is to drive the posts that hold the panel. And there are opportunities to use equipment to do that. In the first instance, we can drill through the rock. As long as we can secure the post, there is no need to blast. Blasting, if necessary, is a licensed activity. It's heavily regulated, and it would be done in a controlled fashion with proper documentation, both pre and post blasting, as I previously stated. I don't believe erosion is really an issue here. Through our DM, we'll submit a soil erosion control plan. We will not remove any soil from the site or topsoil as required under the ordinance. Mr. Matthews, and I know where he lives on Watercrest Court. I believe he's on the opposite side from the Director Butters. The, he mentioned the Gold Metal Farms project. Information that was provided to him and to other neighbors from Mr. Douglas Doe, who lives on Lipid Avenue. Mr. Doe has made a career out of following Revody Energy around the state of Rhode Island to various communities. You know, he, he was not, the, the area that Gold Metal Farms is developed as a solar facility had been approved by the owner for 39 lot, red, single-family residential housing subdivision. I handled that. I had taken it through the permitting process, and then the owner had an opportunity to do this transaction with Revody Energy. The trade-off, the city viewed it as 39 homes, police, fire, school costs, and they, they accepted the concept of a solar facility. You know, constructing a 21-megawatt facility, I'm not sitting, standing here telling you that there, you know, there weren't little blips along the way. At the end of the day, it's installed, it's operating, it's a quiet neighbor, and the temporary inconvenience with the traffic going by Mr. Doe's house, he reminds me every time I see him at City Hall or other town halls. He's just not a fan of my client, and I can't, I can't help that. But he, he, he does a good job of sharing information wherever we go, and Coventry is no exception. That's the best I can do with those questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. They does answer your questions, Mr. Matthews? No, not even close. It's, this is wrong. It, it shouldn't be allowed. It's 109 acres that they're sweetheart dealing into one corner of the property because it's the only property that's suitable to build on. So again, I go back to my first question. Why can't we put it in Mr. Palumbo and Mr. Murray's backyard? Why is it going to be in my backyard? And you're telling me that there's going to be no erosion? There's going to be no contamination, nothing going into those wetlands? I don't buy it for a second.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't know what more I can add. I get it. He's not happy with it, and I can only tell you is that any activities on this site, any activities on this site, any activities on this site will be heavily regulated by the town, by the state. And I'm confident we can, we can meet the permitting requirements necessary for this.
Okay, Mr. Murray, thank you. Mr. Matthews, I think he's answered the questions in the best of his ability. I actually live on Calvin Town Road too, so I'm very familiar with the area. I mean, I don't know what more I can say. I think I pretty much outlined it. I don't see how it benefits Coventry. I don't see how it benefits any of the neighbors. I don't see how it's a good idea in any aspect, other than for Revody and Mr. Vinagro. But I'll leave it at that. And the, you know, the planning board, you're the Coventry. I have lived here for 17 years, and I did move to Coventry because it was a quiet rural area. I used to live in Warwick, 30 years. So now I just invested 18 years into Coventry. My property is going to go to shit. This doesn't make sense to me. Well, thank you, Mr. Matthews, for participating.
Thank you.
Okay, can we move on? I think Mr. Matthews is done.
Okay. The next one I have is, it's Gary's. Is there anybody here? I've brought you in. I, there you go.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, my name is Michael Geary. I live at 8 Lower Court. I'm in the neighborhood adjacent to what your plans are. I do appreciate all the information in the very long-winded presentation tonight. There was a lot of information and dialogue on there that a lot of consumers and not electrical engineering people would not understand. So I do appreciate you walking us through it. But as Mr. Matthews expressed, this neighborhood does not want this property, this construction, this project to continue. We are concerned about our property value. We are concerned about the health implications. We're really upset about the fact that there's absolutely zero tax implications for the town. This, this project is not good for Coventry. We've had an issue with infrastructure. We've had an issue with businesses. We've had an issue with taxes for several reasons, and this is not helping in any way. There's no benefit to this whatsoever for this town. And we're giving up prime location in a neighborhood, not in a vested parcel of land in middle of nowhere. You have over 107 new homes in this neighborhood alone in the last five years. That's 107 new families that have just moved into this neighborhood, and now you're putting a power plant in their backyard. It is not right. It is not warranted, and I am 1,000% against this. And I am 1,000% against this, and I believe that every single person in this neighborhood and on these streets are against this too. The planning board, I have a question for you. Do any of you live in this neighborhood?
I live on Coventon Road.
Where, where do you live, sir?
I live at 21 Coventon Road.
All right. So you live closer to 117. This will not impact your property. This won't impact your health. This won't impact.
It's not about my property. It's about everybody's property. So we don't want it to impact anybody's property.
Well, you're going to.
This is why we're having these discussions.
Right. And you're, you're going to impact the value of the homes in this neighborhood. You're going to impact the value of the homes on this street. And point blank, we don't want it. I, I think it's an awful location. It's an adjacent to a neighborhood where there's children and growing families. I mean, I mean, did you really think about where you wanted to put this when this, when this planning company came to you and said, let's put it in someone's backyard? Does that make sense to you? I drive by the Hope Road plant every single day. There's one or two homes there. You know, that's, there's 107 now, new homes in this neighborhood. I, I'm just completely opposed against it. We moved here five years ago. I'm a 45-year-old resident of Coventry. I've been here for 45 years. And if this plant goes in, I will be leaving. Just want to put that plain, plain clear. Not a good spot. It's a really horrible idea. You don't want to put it next to a neighborhood. I mean, Mr. Murray was very vague when the question came up, what's the health implications? He said, eh, shouldn't do anything. Shouldn't is not really what I want to hear when you put a power plant behind my house. The extent of the tax implications, $1.25 per resident of Coventry, a $45,000 tax credit per year is minimal. Absolutely minimal with the tax, the tax revenue and the schools going up, the town property tax going up, the fire taxes going up. This isn't helping at all. So I don't understand what the philosophy behind this is. And I'm extremely concerned, and I think the board really needs to think very, very hard before they approve this. And my last, last question is, are you approving or voting on this today?
I can't really answer that at this time. It could possibly be voted on today, but I see that there's 60 participants in line, probably not.
Okay. Well, I've got it off my chest. You know where I stand.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know he asked if we were voting on this tonight. I just want him to be aware, this is not a one-vote process, so maybe we can just reiterate.
Yep.
That there's, there's this vote, then there's, he needs a special use permit from the zoning board, which includes public input. And then he comes back here for preliminary approval and then final approval. So there's a total of four votes that are required as the plans develop. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just.
Yes, there'll be several public hearings on this, but you know, your question addressed tonight. We don't have to rush through this at all. I, we are taking this very seriously, and we want to hear the input from, from the developer and the residents that are around this array.
I appreciate that. Have you had any positive feedback from residents?
I, I haven't heard any tonight so far. I think you're number three.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Crossman, you want to move on?
I'm gonna go to Ann Harris at this time. I see, I don't know how, I must have accidentally brought her in last time. Ann, if I could ask you to unmute, please?
Hi.
Hi, okay, there you go.
Yes, this is Ann Harris. I'm actually, I live right across the street from Venagro Site.
Your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
Oh, yeah, 179 Coventon.
Thank you.
Yep, and I know that there's been blasting there, and they've been pretty adamant in making, making sure that we are aware. If there is any blasting going on for that site that you're starting to, well, you're actually planning, we want to make sure that we have advanced notice. But on the other hand, I do want to say that I'm not, I'm not right near that area, but I am concerned as well because of traffic with all the, the large trucks and whatnot. And from, based on conversations with the people in the neighborhood, I want to say that, I want to say at least 90% of them are against it as well, so it's just very concerning. We went from having to deal with the Venagro Site with the stench that they uncovered the other day, a couple, a year ago. And now we're dealing with this, so we kind of have like a lot going on on this one street, and I think we've had enough of it. But again, this is my opinion, and I know in speaking with others, they all feel the same way. I'm just trying to voice, be their voice in a sense. If they're not on this call right now, I want to be able to make sure that you are aware of how we actually feel. And if you do live on Coventon, you have to know exactly what we're talking about. And I have been a resident here on this street now for 11 years, and I've learned quite a bit that I think we made a mistake coming, but we're here and we have to deal with everything, but we want to do it the right way, and we want to make sure that everyone's happy. And keep us, I don't know, we just want to, even the wildlife, we want to make sure that they're safe too, because that's why we moved here in the first place. It was very serene, and now we're losing all that, so. So that's my, my thing. No actual real questions, except the fact of the blasting part. We want to, we want to know when it's going to happen and be prepared, because we've always had to do that with Venagro too. And we have to keep an eye on our foundations, because we already have a crack in ours.
Thank you, Mrs. Harris, for your input. Mr. Murray, I think, I think you've addressed the blasting component. It would be a last resort.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I can add anything. I appreciate Ms. Harris's comments, and we've talked about the notification and the pre-inspection stuff. I just, I just want to talk a little bit about truck traffic from this project. And I, and I respect and understand the neighbors' viewpoint, you know, who lives on Coventon Road or in the surrounding area. You know, I've admitted or acknowledged that in the short term during construction, there will be movement. They will mobilize onto the site. Most of the equipment stays. At some point, when they're ready, panels will be delivered. It's, it's not a long process. We're not talking about a lot of panels. And when we're all done and we're operating, the only thing they will see on this site is maybe once a month, a pickup truck goes through for maintenance purposes. This does not generate any post-construction traffic in the area. And the maintenance person just goes in to make sure there's no, no damage to any panels and making certain that, you know, everything is in order. But I will acknowledge during construction, there will be some truck, truck activity, and we try and try and be supportive of people's quiet solitude of their area, but there, there will be some construction activity, just as there would be if this was turned into a residential subdivision. You know, we have a compressed period when we, when we, when we're mobilizing this project, and then we go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Is that all the questions you've had, Mrs. Harris?
There was just one thing that I was wondering too. I know that the Rock Quarry has a lot of land that they've already dug into. Isn't that a good spot to actually put the, those panels in? It's already, most of the work has been done. I mean, how much more digging are they going to do? I always thought that was going to be that next project, would be to put the panels in there. Because at one point, they were talking about putting condos in there from when I, when I first moved in. So, I don't know.
I don't think I can answer that question.
But I, but if you think about it, the land is already clear, right? They're not going to be digging where they've already dug. You know, and it just seems like that's wasted land right there. They could have just put the panels in there instead of disturbing something that's growing and letting the animals run free in that area. So it just seems like it's a waste. I don't know. But that's just my opinion again, but I will, I'll stop because I know other people have questions too, so I just wanted to make sure I spoke.
Well, we do appreciate your opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next person is Michael Burke. Michael?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Michael Burke, B U R K E, and I'm a resident of 2 Watercrest Court. My property is directly to the south of this proposal. While I understand the need for renewable energy and solar power, I am not against that. However, I feel there's a time and a place for something like this. And that place is not in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So with that being said, my first question to the members of the commission, I had sent an email to Director Crossman earlier in the week, raising the question of an environmental review team. Have you been made aware of that email?
Yes.
Okay, will that have any consideration? And the reason I stress that is because of the documented history of illegal dumping and the negative impact that it had on the residents of Coventon Road, specifically having their wells contaminated and having to be converted over to town water. Is, is any of that with this, with, with earth moving, you know, trees being cut down, traffic in and out of the site? Are these concerns going to be raised again? A couple of speakers ago, the smell was brought up, so clearly there's something on this property. Is that going to be an issue? Is an environmental review team going to be implemented in this case?
Mr. Murray, would you like to answer that question? I know it's up to the board. We can require an ERT.
Right. I, I did have the benefit of reviewing Mr. Burke's email, and I've communicated with him previously. Mr. Crossman did send that along to the commission and included me in your email chain. You know, I am familiar with the ordinance and regulation regarding the ERT. That's a discretionary call of the commission. And will abide by your guidance on that. I would, you know, say that based on the criteria of some of the considerations that the ERT can undertake, I'm not sure they're all applicable, but, you know, we will be guided by the commission's direction on that. With respect to Mr. Burke's comments, I can't really, you know, Mr. Palumbo did testify that prior to acquisition in May, Hoffman Engineering did a Phase 1 environmental study, both, both historically on the property or property records, onsite analysis. There was nothing in that Phase 1 study, and they've done multiple ones for Mr. Palumbo that would lead us to believe there's any illegal dumping on there. I can't speak to the history when he talked about the well situation. I'm just not familiar with it. As far as the smell, I, I don't, I can't speak to that either, but there is, we're, we're satisfied that in the first instance, this is not some type of property that has all sorts of environmental concerns. And the bulk of this property is covered with wetlands, and they're regulated wetlands, both swamp, riverbank. And we will abide by DEM's direction on, on, on how we develop the property. But the, but I appreciate his suggestion. You know, it was very thoughtful, his email. But we'll, we'll, we'll be guided by the planning commission's decision on that.
Okay, Mr. Murray. Mr. Burke, I will address that. I know that property very well, and a lot of that was filled in by the previous owner, LaComb Escavation. So I understand where you're going with this. I don't know if there's anything on record that there was illegal dumping in the area, so I certainly can't address that, but I appreciate you bringing that up.
You're welcome. And I have one further thing. One of the biggest things that I think you're going to see pushback with this, obviously, no one, we don't, we don't want it to begin with, but the biggest concern is a buffer zone and seeing this thing. And, you know, per the ordinance, these, these solar installations should be screened from view beyond the property boundary on a year-round basis. So on a year-round basis, let's look at those, and, and no disrespect to Mr. Murray, Palumbo, Russo, and Mr. Carter. And I'd spoken with Mr. Carter, the landscape architect before. Those visualizations in the last page of your packet, pictures don't do it justice. You really need to come out and see from a resident's point of view, looking out their back windows, standing in their backyards, to see what 40 feet is. Most of you are in, you know, your home offices, your living room, whatever. How big is that room? Eight by 10, 10 by 12? Turn around. That buffer zone is going to be only a little bit bigger than that room that you're in. How many trees can you really plant in that area, you know, to camouflage this on a, on a year-round basis, as we say? 40 feet is not a lot. In the 157 feet that I have, that buffers this property, the 40 feet, I have nine oak trees, nine oak trees and some shrubs. That's nothing. That's nothing. And an additional 20 feet beyond that, I'm still going to be able to see this, no matter how much of a berm you put in, no matter how much you plant. A 40-foot buffer is just totally inadequate. And I'll go a step further to say, you as the commission have a perfect litmus test for this solar farm. Look two and a half miles to the east, to the city of Cranston, where they just put one in on Hope Road and a, and a second one on Lipid Ave. Now, mind you, the city has banned, I'll say that again, banned these types of projects, unless they're in an industrial area of the city. They don't do them in residential neighborhoods anymore, for obvious reasons. So some of the things that they learned from doing these projects, and they've just gone through their ordinance again and changed things from the city of Cranston, in their ordinances, in their memos from the planning department. The city, the residents of Western Cranston should not have the fear that their properties will be devalued by solar development. Obviously, it's a concern for the city of Cranston. Screening of ground-mounted solar installations is absolutely critical and should involve neighborhood input. That's from the planning commission in the city. The screening of Hope Farms Solar is inadequate. They found that it's totally inadequate. If they were going to do it again, they would do it totally differently. Solar should be incentivized on rooftops, canopies, gravel pits, and other previously disturbed sites. So and to go even further, one of the things that Cranston has, they have a tree disturbance setback in the ordinance. So we talked a few minutes ago, you know, Mr. Murray and even Mr. Crossman say the comprehensive plan needs updating. Well, I think our zoning ordinance in Coventry needs to be updated at some point too. That should be looked at. And one of the things Cranston did, this tree disturbance setback, in the ordinance, they require a setback of 400 feet from any residential structure. You won't cut down a tree to put in a solar farm within 400 feet of a home. How come in Coventry, we only have a 40-foot buffer? That's a big, big, big difference. 40 feet of trees and 400. And all of those things are essential for, for residents, for the community, for, for us that live there, to see these things. You know, one, again, we just don't want to see it. We don't want to see it. I don't think it belongs in this residential neighborhood to begin with, but just a matter of seeing the thing. Why is it two and a half miles away? 400 feet is what they, they feel is, is adequate, but in Coventry, it's 40 feet for us. It just doesn't make sense. You know, you can, you can only put so many trees in a 20-foot buffer. And lastly, I'll just go on to say, if this does go through, why is it where it is? Why can't it be, you know, moved away from the homes? If you look at the plan, immediately to the north of the solar array, it appears to be 150 to 200 feet of already cleared space, you know, just south of this road that travels east to west across the property. Why can't you move these panels further to the north? Or a little to the north and a little to the west? Get them away from the residents. They don't need to be right on top of these houses. There's no, there's no need for it.
Okay, Mr. Burke, I appreciate your input. I'm going to ask Mr. Murray if he can address, if the array can be moved in the northern direction, because I know the neighborhood very well. I live on. Because I know the neighborhood very well. I live on Calventown Road. I am concerned myself about the screening aspect of it. So could you address that, Mr. Murray?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, just, just a couple of points of clarification. For the record, Mr. Burke was referring to a project on Hope Road. I was not involved in that project, and neither was my client. That's not our project. I can't, you know, I know that I'm very familiar with it because I live in Western Cranston. But that Hope Road solar project was not a Revity project, just for the record. The Gold Medal Farms one is, and respectfully, you know, from Lipid Avenue, you cannot see this, see that project. So because of the screening and everything else. The, with respect to the recitation by Mr. Burke, and I apologize, I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I did see some of the paraphernalia that was being circulated to the, to Mr. Crossman. There was a, there was a staff memo from Cran, from the planning department that was from, was not, that did not address the ordinance that ultimately passed. So to my knowledge, this 400-foot tree setback thing, I'm, I'm, I can't say with conviction that that is in existence in Cranston. I agree that they did remove in the 880 zone, which is two acre zoning in Western Cranston, solar arrays as a matter of right. So I just, I just need to clarify that. As far as the, you know, the citing of this project. First, I want to reiterate what I said at the outset. The planning commission didn't decide that these projects could go in an RR2 zone. The town council has, and we're only following what's in your schedule of uses. That it wasn't a decision of the planning commission, it was a decision of the town council. As far as, Mr. Chairman, your question, we spent considerable time with Mr. Burke at the site visit when it was held. My landscape architect chatted with him quite a bit. We offered, we will reiterate again, if we're allowed to proceed here with his permission, we will do an onsite inspection. We'll address whatever conditions, site conditions that he's concerned about. I want to reiterate if, and I think I know where his house is, at the end of Watercrest Court. You know, the nearest panel is like 300 feet. It's not 60 feet. So there is considerable separation from the panels to the, to the properties on that, on the, what I would say, the north side of Watercrest Court. With respect specifically to your, your questions, to Chairman, Calventown Realty acquired the LaCombe property because it was zoned properly for the solar array. And that's why it's laid out the way it is. And we are, you know, we're supportive of that, the positioning of the panels as we've presented it in the master plan.
That address your concerns, Mr. Burke?
Slightly. I'm just still a little confused as to why there is already cleared land slightly to the north and why this can't be moved slightly to the north. Where you don't have to cut down any trees, you know, move it further into the, up into the LaCombe land, up into the Vinagro land. Move it up there, get it away from these homes. And also to mention, you only have to screen on two sides, and you only have proposed screening on two sides. That's half of this project. Give us a little more, you know, give us more of a buffer. You know, what's back there, the 40 feet that's existing, a lot of that in the winter is bare. It's gone. So I really do still have concerns. And, and Mr. Murray, I have spoken with him before, and he is welcome to come to my property, landscape architect. The landscape architect is welcome to come to my property. Any of the planning commission members are welcome to come to my property and see what it looks like looking out. And you will see the concern and the need for, I feel, an increased buffer. And that's, that's all I can say. I really, I don't know how many times I can say it.
Okay, Mr. Burke, this, this board can certainly schedule a site walk if they, if they want to do that. That's not a problem. You know, we are concerned that this board I've worked with for many years, and this is not an easy board to push things through. You know, we, we take our time and we make sure the residents are mostly happy with, with any project that we, that we do. So if, and I appreciate you, your input. We certainly all do that.
Mr. Flynn, if I may?
Yes.
The board does not have to schedule a site walk to go see Mr. Burke's house. You all have Mr. Burke's email address. If you individually would like to go to Mr. Burke's house, you can just shoot him an email, and I'm sure he'd be willing to accommodate you.
Okay, that's, that's great information. I'm sure some board members will, will want to go out and, and view that property.
I think it'll be very eye-opening to get a point of perspective from someone that's going to have to live there for the next 25 years.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, you want to get to the next?
Yeah. Gary, did we hear from them?
Yes.
We did. Okay. So now I'm, because they have their hand raised again. So the next one I'm going to go to is Kelly Powers. Allowed to talk is not available because Kelly Powers is using an older version of Zoom. Please promote to panelists to allow her to talk. All right? I'm going to bring her in as a panelist to allow her to speak.
Thank you.
Yep. Kelly, can you hear us?
Can you hear me okay?
There you go.
Hi, you guys. Kelly Powers, P O W E R S. I'm eight Watercrest Court. Thank you, guys, and thank you to Mr. Murray for the presentation. I just want to echo what my neighbors had said as well. I mean, I do not want this in my backyard. I don't know any other way to stress that. I've taken a lot of notes tonight, so a lot of information. I just want to say thank you for that. My first one, my first question is I, I just want to go back to say that, you know, making a major plan and presenting it. And I just want to be clear that in my question, that DEM is, has not been out there yet. We don't have a permit for DEM. Is that what I'm gathering?
Mr. Murray, would you want to answer that question, please?
Yeah, the short answer is no, we have not submitted anything to DEM.
Not yet.
Because we have to do, we have to do detailed engineering, and you wouldn't go forward unless we had a conceptual approval from the planning board.
I feel like DEM would be very important. For one, it's testing, you said that it would test the wastewater. What else does it test? The DEM?
It'll check the wetland buffer.
The wetland buffer, the wastewater. My concern is also what Ms. Harris said as well, is that rotten egg smell. We dealt with it. Mr. Wazika, you can confirm that I have sent you multiple emails about that. And thank you because you have handled it. However, with that being said, that is a major concern because whatever it is, is not good back there. And, you know, that on top of it, I, I would really be curious to see what DEM has to say. I am gathering that there's not a plan, solid plan from National Grid as well, if I got that right. Is that fair to say? I don't know. I, I said that, you know, you have National Grid, that the power will be going to it. But in my notes, it says that there is not nothing yet from National Grid.
Is that all your questions, and then we'll let Mr. Murray address it?
No, that's not. It says that National Grid hasn't finished their design, was what my, I guess my question was going to be. So that's one question. My next question is going to be about the planning and commission. It's dated, yes? So are we following what's in there now? In the commission and zoning plan now, is that what we are following while it's?
Yes, we're following the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And the plan.
Upon reading that, in the ordinance, it does say that the company is to utilize open cleared land before even thinking about clearing out any property. And like Mr. Burke said, there is cleared land to the north. So why are we not utilizing that and putting it in our backyard is, you know, really frustrating to me, to be honest. You know, and I, I wanted to ask Mr. Vinagro that. He wasn't at the meeting. I wanted to ask Mr. Vinagro tonight. He's not here. So I guess I'll ask you guys that question as well. You know, and I want to echo what my neighbor said. 40 feet, 60 feet is not even close to enough. You know, and especially after reading the ordinances from Cranston, the 400 feet is bare. You know, if it's up out of that ridge, then I, you know, okay, I get it, solar energy, and I, I am for it. Just not 40 feet from my house. I'm also very concerned about health. I have two kids. My property value. I mean, the, the, it goes on and on. My other major concern is, yes, blasting. I've already talked to Mr. Murray about this. I've already talked to everybody, and I keep getting the same thing. Oh, we don't want to do it unless it's unnecessary. Well, let me tell you, there are boulders and there are ledge all the way back there. They're not going to be able to lift it. They're not going to be able to move it. It's going to have to be blasted, and it's going to have to be drilled. And I want to know specifics. Who covers that? Is there an insurance? Who the insurance company is that covers that, in fact? I want to know who the pre-existing, you know, where the pre-install comes in. Who does that? Who does the post? Because I'm telling you right now, when Vinagro was blasting back there before, my house could feel it. So coming 40 feet behind my house, if a mirror drops or my foundation cracks or, you know, anything on my wall stop falling, that's a problem. I mean, this is, this is a lot of blasting, and I don't, I don't feel like it's being enough light shed on the, yeah, enough light shed on the subject about the blasting. It's, well, we don't want to. It's expensive if we have to. Well, guess what? Here we are, because that's all that's back there is ledge and boulders. So I want very specific details about the blasting, because I'm sure Vinagro's going to be doing the blasting. So I'd, I'd like to know a little bit more information about that. And I, and not just, well, we're going to try to avoid it, like I want some specifics about it, I guess.
Mr. Murray, you want to address that, please?
Sure. In the short term, the blasting issue. Mr. Vinagro does not do the blasting. We have an experienced licensed blaster.
Who is blasting?
Blasting is done all over the state of Rhode Island and all over the country. It can be done appropriately, safely. I can only tell you that while I don't, I'm, I'm, I think I have as much information on this site right now as Ms. Powers. We have not yet done the detailed engineering you would be required to do to make those assessments. Depreet Engineering would have to spend considerable time out there doing test holes, position of where the panels would go. You know, you know, if there's an opportunity to put a post somewhere where you don't need to do a lot of excavation work, that's what we do. So there is just not the level of information that's needed. I understand it's an anxious question for her, but when we have the information, everybody will have the information. I just want to go back to the the issue of the you know, the rotten egg smell. I, I, I respect that. I'm sure that there is some type of order. It sounds like you spoke to the town manager about that. You know, I could do some investigation on that. I just don't, that's a new issue for me tonight. If it came up at the neighborhood meeting, I apologize. That was not clear to me. But the, you know, there is, we're just not at the level of detail yet because master plan doesn't require to give assurances that I'm comfortable representing. Based on Revity's experience with 25 solar projects, Depreet Engineering's involvement, the Natural Resource Services biologist work, we are confident what we've represented here is very close to what, what can be achieved. The, the issue of, you know, National Grid, we, we, before we start this process, we speak to National Grid. We have a sense of where they would make a connection on Calventown Road. What you, what I said was, we do not yet have what's called an interconnection agreement. Because frankly, we have to pay for that. And for them to design it, that could be, we did a project where frankly, we spent a million dollars on the interconnection agreement. So, you know, I'm not saying that's what this would cost, but we're talking about several hundreds of thousands of dollars. If we don't know we can do this project, we, we wouldn't spend that money. But as part of our preliminary submission, we will provide, and it's cited in your planning director's report, we would provide that level of satisfaction to the community and to the planning commission that this is real and National Grid is, has approved and how we're going to technically accomplish this.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to go back to the open land. If you could answer that, Mr. Murray, if that's okay?
Sure. I, I understand it. Calventon Realty acquired from the LaCombe property, this property, and a good part of it is tree. And unfortunately, shade cast is a problem with solar panels. That's why some trees have to be removed. It is not a business option right now that, you know, the land we acquired is treeed. It needs to be cleared. It is not an opportunity we have as far as if someone thinks we should move this up to Mr. Vinagro's quarry. I know where Ms. Harris lives at 179 Calventon Road, because that's where the entrance we used to, to get for the, for the neighborhood visit last week. So I know where she lives. You know, it is just not, it's just not a business opportunity or a reality that we can move these panels onto the Rockwood Realty property.
Okay, and another question is, you know, I, I took about eight pages of notes tonight, so it was a lot of information, and I thank you for that. However, you know, I, I look at it, and with benefits, it's none. I have a question mark with a, kind of like a laughing face, because there's no benefits for anyone in the neighborhood, the town. You had said, Mr. Murray, that even if the Coventry schools, if your Revity Engineering isn't on the property, that someone else could bid and get Coventry Public Schools, correct, for the electric?
What I said was
Bid.
Yeah. Let me try and clarify that. The Revity Energy went through RFP or Request for Proposal bid system with the Coventry Public Schools, who are looking for a partner to net meter. They were awarded that contract, and that energy credits that they're going to benefit from come from another site, not the Calventown Road property. The, I didn't know this the other night, but Mr. Palumbo reminded me that the town of Coventry, the government side, not the school side, has already advanced through an RFP process for a net meeting agreement on the government side. So if, if we're, if we build this project, the energy credits will go offsite to another community or quasi-agency. The, there is, you know, and I, and I have to defend this, there is a benefit to the town in terms of the, and we should not minimize the permit fees that go with a project like this. Multiples of thousands of dollars. There will be more tax generated from this site than presently, because it's, it's under the Farm Forest and Open Space Act right now. The state of Rhode Island has passed legislation that we will be required to pay tangible personal property tax to the town based on a formula and real estate tax based on a formula. So, and then the overall one that nobody wants to appreciate is the fact of clean renewable energy, getting away from fossil fuels. I understand if you live on Watercrest Court, that may not be your priority tonight. But, so there are multiple benefits to the community. Ms. Powers, I, you know, we, you were Ms. Powers, I, you know, we, you were very attentive the other evening. I reiterate again, our invitation, we will come to your property. We will do whatever we can to satisfy any outstanding questions at any time. And I thank you for your interest.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Can I answer your question, Mrs. Powers?
Some of it. Thank you very much, Mr. Flynn.
Yes. And thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Ready, Mr. Flynn?
Yes, Mr. Crossman.
Okay, I'm going to go to somebody with the last four digits of their phone numbers. Two, five, one, eight.
That's me, Pat Hickey. Sorry, I thought I had, well, I signed in on Zoom thing. I guess I'm a little bit technically challenged tonight.
We need you.
Anyway, it's Pat Hickey. H I C K E Y. Formerly of Two Watercrest Courts. That was my home for forty years. I just moved two months ago. I now live on Ten Rivers Edge in Covington. And so I want to, I'm hoping I'm not going to be repeating anything. Most of the neighbors up there have voiced their opinion and I am in agreement. I don't believe that a solar farm, a major solar farm belongs in that particular area of our town. Now, Mr. Murray talked a great deal about the town's comprehensive plan and how his project met the criteria and, 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 you know, and of course, he's looking for an approval. And, and I don't think it's any secret, I'm looking for a disapproval. So I took a look at the comprehensive plan and I read that and I say to myself, that comprehensive plan, in my opinion, is really a social agreement between our town officials, the planning committee, zoning committee, and the residents of Coventry. Okay? Mr. Murray represents an out-of-town solar developer. And he's going to, he wants to bring business into the town and all that sort of thing. And that is, you know, that's a great thing. However, the town of Coventry has this comprehensive plan that very clearly states that it is, it's a foundation of managing orderly and planned growth of Coventry prescribed by the community. Okay? It meets the needs of the community. It minimizes environmental degradation. It upholds the scenic quality of the town. The plan refers to Coventry, specifically Central Coventry, as a bedroom community. Okay? Not a commercial industrial manufacturing site. And although Mr. Murray will say they're not manufacturing electricity, his own words during his presentation was that they will be generating electricity and selling it to National Grid. So in my, my mind, I look at that and I say, that is an operation that is going to be generating or manufacturing electricity and selling it up to National Grid. That belongs in an industrial site, not a residential neighborhood. Now, while lot number eighty-five-one, which he's asking for the special, special use permit on, is rated as RRQ, he's also asking for a special use permit on ninety-two-one. Okay? Ninety-two-one is the gravel pit. Eighty-five-one is a tree lot, zoned residential, that abuts other residential properties. And the properties on Watercrest Court, many of them are only one half per acre lot. So now you have an RRQ developed plot, a budding, another neighborhood that only has half acre plot. So I think that I would, I would really ask the, the planning board here to really look at that. I mean, that, that's a big deal to them. And I think that it should be a big deal to everybody else who's on this board. Now, it also talks about in our plan that if we're supposed to be or the, the powers that be in our town should be encouraging economic growth, to balance the tax burden, create jobs without degrading natural and man-made environment. While they're going to bring in forty-five thousand dollars in taxes, what jobs are they bringing to our town? They're not bringing jobs to us. It's supposed to, our town is supposed, the, the, the planning and zoning is supposed to protect the cultural, natural and historic resources, encourage development and maintenance of compatible land use through comprehensive land use planning. Solar farm, solar farm is not compatible in residential areas. It's my opinion. So in order, how are we going to preserve the character of Coventry? Section of Central Coventry is zoned residential. We've got hundreds, if not thousands. You heard one of our other neighbors mention in the last five years, a hundred and seven new residences were put in that particular neighborhood. Where's the protection for those people that have moved there? They didn't move there to live next to a solar farm. And yes, Mr. Murray talked, had someone, I think the gentleman's name was Sweeney, who came in and, and talked about how property values don't go down. I can tell you from personal experience that before I bought this condo in Rivers Edge, I was looking at a condo off of Lippitt Avenue that was in the Orchard Gate community. That Orchard Gate condominium complex abuts the solar farm that Revity installed two years ago. It is an eyesore. They talk about a buffer. What they basically have there is they have trees that are standing dead. They have no leaves on them. And the, and the, the amount of ground covering that they have, I don't know how many feet it is, but it's four feet tall. I personally did not buy in that condominium complex because of that solar farm. And I can also tell you that the property values in that condominium complex are going down. If you go and you look at the tax records, I talked to the neighbors there. They told me they bought their, their places two years ago at a certain price and the new ones are going for less than that. So we don't, we don't have to go to the Midwest or the South to figure out that it's definitely going to have an impact on our property taxes. I mean, our property value. I'm sorry about that. So there's a quality of life issue that's at stake up in that, in that neighborhood, in, on Watercrest Court, on Covington Road, on Peachwood. You know, these people did not buy there because they wanted to be next to a solar farm. They didn't want to be next to a Cumberland farm. They don't want to be next to Garland Manufacturing. They bought there because they wanted to raise their family in a nice, country, close-knit neighborhood. This solar farm does not belong there. And it's going to be up to the people on the planning committee, we're, we're at your mercy. I mean, I'm, you know, I just, I just hope that you take this very seriously. I'm, I'm sure that you do. And really take a look at this and, and just, you know, it's not in the best interest of our town or the residents that live in that area. And that's about all I have to say. But I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your input. Mr. Crossman?
Sure.
I don't believe there was a question. It was just a comment. So if you want to continue?
Sure. Okay, the next one I'm going to bring in. I have them listed as call-in user number two. Is there anybody there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me? Please.
Hi, I live at one six, Michelle Bourq. B O U R Q U E. One sixty-five Covington Road. I want to discuss the fact about the traffic. And let's talk about the trucks. To be honest, we can't foresee what issues that the solar plant will bring, that trucks will not be going. There's trucks with this quarry that are also creating a problem. The blasting creates a problem. You could come to my home and see where the blasting has created a problem. And I'd like to know about the notifications in regards to blasting because we were supposed to know about it with the quarry. Now I'm right across the street on a hill. And when that quarry blasts, I fall out of my bed. When that quarry blasts, I get cracks in my ceiling, cracks in my walls. We are not notified, other than an air horn that goes. So what happened to being notified about blasting there? Nothing. The trucks that come in and out of there aren't supposed to go towards Situate? Or they're not supposed to go towards, you're familiar with Covington Road, correct, Mr. Flynn? So you know the bad corner that's over on Covington Road with the blind driveway. Let's add some more trucks to that. Let alone fixing the road, that's clearly even the issue. The traffic is going to be an issue with the children. So if you come either this way, going towards Hope Furnace, or you're going to go towards Station Street, where now you're dealing with the walking track where people are, you're combining that many more trucks. I don't think we're only going to see one truck. And with the construction, there's going to be how many trucks bringing in solar panels? Do you know those streets, this street is not wide? This street deals with a lot. The smell I had to deal with all last year, the cracks in my foundation, nobody answering any questions, no tax breaks, no anything. And let's combine that by putting a solar plant right in the middle of all of it. I was also told I was going to be two thousand feet away. Now I'm questioning that, considering the fact that I just heard earlier that people were given notices that were within a thousand feet. So I had a notice in my mailbox. So I'm a little closer than I think. So I am definitely against this. So how can you say there won't be much more traffic when we can't even see what the foreseeable problems could possibly be when this is up?
As far as the traffic, I didn't say there wouldn't be any more traffic. But Mr. Murray, you didn't do a traffic analysis. Have you done a traffic analysis? This is way premature for any of that.
No, we haven't. We acknowledge that, you know, you know, Covington Road is a country road. I get that. I can't speak to the, you know, the, Venagro Quarry has been there long before I was practicing law, I think. You know, and I appreciate Ms. Bourq's, you know, I can't speak to the blasting procedures they follow at the quarry.
Well, who does his blasting? Well, most likely, whether Venagro does the blasting there or not, or he brings somebody else in, I don't believe that he won't be participating in what will have to be blast at the solar panels. And considering that they're not following the guidelines that were set up prior to this, they still won't be following it when this is up. That's what I'm thinking.
Let me try and finish my thought. What I can represent is that Revity Energy hires a very reputable blasting company with experience. I am not saying Mr. Venagro's company would not be in, we've already testified that they will be doing some excavation work on the site. Blasting is a specific science and, you know, we will follow all the procedures and the pre-inspection, post-inspection things are part of the license you get from the state fire marshal. I just want to just clarify, because I'm not sure, Ms. Bourq, the, in the RRQ zone, there was a requirement for us to use a one-thousand-foot radius for the notice to a butters. We included all of the Rockwood Realty property. We sent out approximately two-hundred-and-seventy certified mail letters to the cost of about twenty-four hundred dollars, which we, we, we knew that was part of the process. So she is quite a bit aways from where the solar panels are going, but that's why she would have got notice. Thank you, Ms. Jim.
I may be quite a bit away, but traffic-wise, I'm not quite a bit away from any of it. Because depending on which way this traffic's going to flow with these trucks, and I'm already dealing with trucks from the quarry, okay? So that, I'm not, I'm still within the guidelines or the area of where this issue was going to be.
Again, Mr. Chairman, I acknowledge that for a period of time, when they mobilized to get on the site, there will be some, some construction equipment and traffic on Covington Road getting into the site. We specifically are utilizing another access, which I, I understand is closer to Ms. Bourq's home. We do have access at the south end. We have frontage on Covington Road closer to Watercrest Court. We are not going to use that as the access to get on the site. We use an existing access. So short-term, there is construction activity. Long-term, there is no additional truck traffic in the area once, once this project is built. I am not, I am not telling you that there will not be some incremental additional traffic short-term.
So who, will there be any insurance to the homes if there is blasting?
The, the blasting company is required by Mr. Palumbo's company to provide evidence of insurance. Mr., Mr. Palumbo's company has, also has additional insurance. So the insurance is not the issue. It's the documentation before the blasting related to these solar panels. And, you know, with everybody's cooperation, the inspectors get in the house, do the pre-inspection stuff. They will go around your house. They will look for existing cracks. You can point out whatever you'd like to them. And then we do some control blasting. Once that done, they go back and re-inspect to discern whether that is any additional possible cracks or damage. And, you know, the homeowner is heavily involved in that process. So I, I, I can't say more than that.
Question, just because I'm really just learning about this since I got the registered let-up because apparently the people that are closer to it know more about it than I did. So I'm just going by that. This property has already been purchased for this development, correct? Prior to any permits, any testing being done, anything seeing if it can be put on there? The property was purchased exactly for a solar farm, yes?
Mr., a related company to Mr. Palumbo's Revity Energy acquired the property on May fifteenth from another company called Covington Associates, which is a, which is related to the LaComb family who still live on Covington Road. They, we did a certain amount of due diligence before the acquisition. But the bottom line is, not the planning commission, the town of Coventry said major solar installations are allowed on this property in the RRQ zone, which this is, provided you get a special use permit. The first step in getting that special use permit is getting master plan approval. That's why we're here tonight. The planning commission members did not ordain that this property should have solar. A different government body did. And we had knowledge of that when we acquired it. And, and it's on that basis we proceeded.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to voice my opinion as far as the traffic and ask those questions. I appreciate it. And I will say, and I'm sorry, Mr. Murray, to have to say this, I do hope that this does not go through. I mean, it's both sides. It's good for you, bad for, either way, it's not going to be good for one side. So I just hope it's in our favor in this community. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you for your input. We appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Flynn, the next caller we have is call-in user number three. Are you there?
User number.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, go ahead. Your name and address, please.
My name is Patty Delbracco Oribona. I'm at one oh-four Covington Road.
Thank you.
So I would be right next to the solar farm in my side yard and my backyard. And I'm not going to sit here and reiterate what everybody said because it's been a long night already. But you obviously know that most, every caller so far has been against the solar project. I agree with Louis, Matthew, Michael Gary, Anne, Michael Burke, Pat Hickey, Michelle Burke, Kelly Powers. I started a petition. We already have at least eighty-five. And it's only been two days of people signing the petition that, one, it does not belong in a residential area. Again, same reasons, the buffer. I did have the opportunity to go over with Pat into the Lippitt Farm. Okay? The, the project that Ralph Palumbo has done, especially the area surrounding those condos. You talk about a forty-foot buffer that, once again, we've all talked about. Number one, is all going to lose its leaves, if there even is a forty-foot buffer in all of our properties. The twenty-foot buffer, what I saw, and I sent pictures to, to Mr. Crossman of what it looks like. I saw little trees that were about three foot to four foot, abreviated. And who loves abreviated are the deer. They were about maybe six to eight foot spread apart. So in order to get a twenty-foot buffer that no one would ever be. that no one would ever be able to see this, you would need to spend upwards of almost a million dollars just in plantings. Because I, I'm not a landscape architect, but I do like landscapes. And in order to get a beautiful tree that's not gonna lose its leaves, and to, first of all, those trees that you planted would take about 10 or 12 years just to make it to 10 or 12 foot high, if they even live after the deer eat them. So you would almost need to plant two rows of beautiful trees, staggered every other one, to form a natural barrier. Okay, you're gonna put 13,000 panels. I asked, never thought about what happens after 25, 30 years, not only with this site, but all the sites for green energy and our environment. Where are all these panels gonna go to? A landfill? What's gonna happen with them? Um, as far as, so in order for you to try to make all of us happy and make all this planting in everybody's backyard, side yard, you'd spend more money doing that than you bought the property for, in my opinion. The solar farm's only benefiting the land over. It's gonna hurt hundreds of us, our residents living in this area. Okay, zero benefit to us. And if the zoning board does decide to go ahead and, and process this, we as residents should have rights, and you should not, I would oppose with you even making a decision now, because after the property was even purchased, once again, you already went and got all your permits. We as residents haven't had time to even ingest this ever since a week ago, when we had a letter saying this is what was gonna happen. Okay, so we should be able to speak our mind. We live here. Like everybody said, you put this in Mr. Murray's backyard or any of you board members, no one would want this in your own backyard to look at this every day. And if they do decide, I mean, there has been case law and where Superior Court judges have overturned zoning board's approval, because it is, again, a manufacturing facility, where you are manufacturing, um, expressly, you know, where you're selling it to National Grid. So, obviously, Mr. Murray and everyone else, I, oh, again, and then with the, the blasting, I talked to the residents there. They've had cracks in all their foundations. Um, apparently, Mr. Palumbo had offered, so you're mean, you're gonna tell me that you're gonna go to everybody's residence, you're gonna inspect our property first? So then if you're gonna do the blasting, because then again, what everybody said, there's boulders, there's all kinds of things back there. Then you're gonna re-inspect? And then what, you're gonna plan on fixing all of our cracks? What about our septic systems, our wells, and what everybody else said with the smell? I don't wanna, again, reiterate, I just don't think it belongs here either. You're more than welcome to come onto my property, um, and, and see exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Murray, you have something to say to that?
Just very quickly, and I appreciate, uh, Ms. O'Obona's, uh, view. Uh, we, we chatted with her husband and her, uh, a week ago. And I, I, you know, and I, I'm very familiar, they're on Lot 16. I know exactly where they are. Um, I, I just wanna clarify, because I let it go once. Uh, there's been some discussion about this condo developer next to Gold Medal Farms, uh, that's in West Wallack. Uh, the solar project is in Cranston. Um, I'm very familiar with that. Uh, I can tell you that the developer did not help the cause by, uh, his excavation work that cannot be seen from the inside of the condo development. Uh, the trees that were, that abutted, uh, the solar facility have been emasculated. And that had nothing to do with Mr., Mr. Palumbo's solar farm. It was a, I don't know what the developer was doing, uh, but, uh, there are caverns of dead trees laying in holes that are 60 feet deep. I don't know, you know, what, what type of, uh, building technique he's using. But, uh, you know, I agree that there, there could be more landscaping, but the developer removed it. The, Ms. O'Obona asked about what happens with the panels after 25 or 30 years. The, um, you know, we talked about earlier about the, you know, the decommissioning, uh, cash bond that's posted. The, um, you know, if, you know, solar hasn't been around 25 or 30 years in this country, in Europe, it's been around very, a long time. You know, in those instances where panels are removed, uh, they are generally recycled. Uh, that's what happens, and they don't get thrown in a landfill. They're, they're recycled. And I, and I may have misunderstood her. Uh, we have not yet got any of our permits. She said we bought the land and went and got our permits. Uh, this is kinda like the first stop, so I just wanna clarify that. But I appreciate Ms. O'Obona's, uh, concerns. And again, uh, she, she is one most affected, and I respect her opinion. And if given the opportunity, we will, we will try and, you know, work with her and John O'Obona. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Are you all set, Mrs. O'Obona?
Yes, thank you.
Then thank you for your input.
Okay, uh, next I'm gonna bring, um, John O'Obona. John, are you there, sir? You have to unmute yourself?
Okay, ready to go.
Address, please, Mr. O-, Mr. O'Obona?
John. O'Obona, O-R-A-B-O-N-A, 104 Covintown Road.
Okay, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, one for Mr. Grossman, and then one for Mr. Murray. Uh, Mr. Grossman, do you feel that the comprehensive plan that exists reflects the ordinance that was passed pertaining to solar farms? And was the ordinance specific on solar farms?
No, the current ordinance we have, and I'll, I'm glad Attorney D'Agostino came in on this. Uh, the current solar ordinance that we have in place does not mention renewable energy at all.
Okay, that's my question. Because Mr. Murray had led us to believe that it did. And I, from my reading of the statute, didn't seem to say that. That's my first question. Question number two is for Mr. Murray. Bob, would Mr. Palumbo be willing to discuss the terms and conditions of the lease with Mr. Van Agro? That's my first question. Second question is, does the ordinance itself specifically differentiate between a lease and ownership? Because I think the ownership is more important in terms of the development. And obviously, Mr. Palumbo does not have a lea-, doesn't have ownership of the property from Mr. Van Agro. Number three, obviously, I don't know where Mr. Palumbo is embedded with Mr. Van Agro, because Mr. Van Agro doesn't seem to respect the wishes or the desires of the citizens of the Town of Coventry, as well as specifically Covintown Road. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Mr. O'Obona. Mr. Murray, you wanna answer those, please?
Sure, I'll, I'll take a stab at it. Thank you, John. Um, first, um, I was a little unclear about the, the discussion about the, the ordinance. We, Coventry has, uh, an entire section on, uh, special regulations for, uh, solar power. And we fall under Section 255-2140 entitled "Ground-Mounted Solar Installations." And we're, that's the ordinance that we're following. Um, and the schedule of uses in Coventry specifically identify major solar installations as a permitted use um, in the, uh, in the, uh, by special use permit in the RR2 zone. As far as the business terms for the lease between, uh, Mr. Van Agro and Mr. Palumbo, uh, you know, frankly, I, you know, those are not something, you know, we would discuss to the public domain. We will satisfy the town, uh, in terms of whatever documentation is needed at the next level. Uh, but, uh, I, I can't, you know, I understand that there's feelings about Mr. Van Agro's quarry operation there. I get that and respect it. Um, you know, uh, I've done numerous projects with Mr. Palumbo, and Mr. Van Agro has done the site excavation on just about everyone that I can think of. So they have a longstanding business relationship. Uh, Mr. Palumbo's satisfied with the, the, the value that he provides, Mr. Van Agro provides to his, uh, projects. Uh, but in this instance, uh, in the, uh, Revity Energy is gonna own the solar facility. Uh, I, we've already disclosed publicly that Covintown Realty LLC, which bought the 45 acres from, uh, the LaCombs, uh, Mr. Van Agro is a partner in that. And then he, we have no, uh, no interest in Rockwood Realty. So the, it's a, it's a combination of, uh, of, uh, property owners there. Uh, but, uh, we, we think it's a, as presented, is, is a project that would work. Uh, I apologize if there was another question that I didn't write down, but, uh-
The question, Bob, is relationship to the leased land versus ownership of the land?
Right. Covintown Realty, John, owns, uh, the 46 acres that was acquired from, it was, not to confuse things, Covintown Realty LLC bought lands from Covintown Associates Incorporated, which is the LaCombe family, who's, who I think live at 102 Covintown Road. Next, they're very close to you. Uh, they're next door to you, in fact. Uh, that, so Covintown Associates sold to Covintown Realty. Mr. Palumbo and Mr. Van Agro are partners to that entity. Rockwood Realty, which owns the remaining 55 acres, is, uh, we are leasing land from that entity. Mr. Palumbo does not have a financial interest in Rockwood Realty.
Bob, are you saying that Mr. Palumbo will discuss and present to the town the terms and conditions of the lease with Mr. Van Agro?
We, we will, if the town requires us, and I think, you know, the, to document, uh, control of the site, and that's generally what the, the term that we use, uh, we will satisfy the town on that. Uh, but as far as what the rental terms are, or, you know, it's, it's a, it's a lease that is sufficient for the life of the project. Uh, and, but, you know, whether we're paying a dollar a year or a hundred dollars a year, frankly, I think that's between Mr. Palumbo and Mr. Van Agro, and we will not disclose that.
Last question, Bob. What happens under the circumstances that, let's just assume that the board approves the project, and it, project is in the ground, it's completed and so forth, and many of the residents feel that Mr. Palumbo has not kept up his part of the bargain? The only remedy that the people will have would be to bring Mr. Palumbo into court. Is that correct?
No, not at all. First of all, Revity Energy is a Rhode Island company. Uh, there are a lot of solar companies that do development in Rhode Island and elsewhere. Their home office is in Colorado, or, you know, Michigan. Uh, Revity Energy's on Metro Center Boulevard in Wallack. The Palumbo family lives, his, his daughter and three sons are involved in the company. They're all, one of them lives in Coventry. Uh, they are gonna be, you know, their reputation is important. Their word is important. Uh, whether it's Russell Crossman, his planning director, or Mr. Wachiga, uh, town officials will not have trouble finding Revity Energy and the Palumbos to answer questions, to address issues. We are hands-on, we're, you know, and we're not going anywhere. This is a generational company that's gonna be built for the next, you know, 100 years. So, uh, Mr. Palumbo may not be around 100. I don't think I'm gonna be around 100. But he has children who are a, a, at the beginning of their careers, and this is a, a commitment that they've made, yeah, to renewable, to be in the renewable energy field. So when, when, whether it's the fire chief or the building official, or Mr. Crossman has a question, uh, they will respond, and, uh, we will, and that includes the neighbors too. So we're not, we don't go in hiding here, and we're not getting out of plane and going back to Colorado.
Bob, please answer my question.
I'm sorry. I thought I did. What was the question, John?
Oh, no, you were around it.
Okay.
Redress of grievances by the landowners that are surrounding this project.
Right.
If things don't go according to form.
Right.
The only, the only redress of grievance the residents could have is to bring a suit in Superior Court. Is that not correct?
No, I don't agree with that, John. There, I, if we're fortunate enough to receive approvals for, to construct this, there are gonna be conditions on the approvals, there always are. Uh, and those are enforceable by the town. Uh, and, uh, you know, we don't, uh, we, the only people who make money in court, John, as you know, are the lawyers. And I don't do litigation, so, uh, but the bottom line is, uh, we are in the business of trying to, um, present this company in a favorable way to address issues. Uh, can I tell you that, you know, some neighbor someday might bring a lawsuit? I can't, I can't say that that wouldn't happen. That is not our modus operandi. Uh, we're trying to, uh, we're trying to begin a good dialogue and relationship, and that will continue during the life of this project.
Okay, Bob, we'll talk about that another time.
Well, we're on, we're, we're being taped, John, so you, you know where I am.
I understand.
Thank you, John.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. O'Obona.
Thank you.
Uh, just for the record, uh, Mr. Crossman, uh, I believe, uh, Ms. Lukowicz had to leave the meeting? You're muted.
I'm sorry, I apologize, sir. Yes, she did have to leave. Um, I, I just wanna note that she probably stepped out about, I'm gonna say about 10 minutes ago.
All right, thank you.
She was not feeling well.
Okay.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, can I just go back, because I have an update on information? A couple of people earlier, and so we don't keep misrepresenting this. Uh, there was this, this, this discussion that Cranston now requires a 400-foot setback. Uh, while we were meeting tonight, I text Jason Pizzullo, the planning director in Cranston. Uh, and I asked him if he could confirm that. He said, "That might have been in an earlier draft with the restrictive A-80, but that was killed when the, when the ultimate ordinance was, was passed." So as I represented, uh, and I'll, I'll confirm this tomorrow from Mr. Crossman, there is no 400-foot setback requirement for solar in Cranston. Uh, and I just, I, I didn't want that to keep getting misrepeated, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Okay, Mr. Crossman, would you like to continue?
Yep, uh, uh, next we have Doug. I'm, um, are you there, sir? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Doug, your name and address, please, for the record.
Uh, Doug was Doug, 178 Lipit Avenue in Cranston. Um, if I may, first reply to Mr. Murray. I don't follow Mr. Palumbo around Rhode Island. Being a project in Hawkington proposed, the residents contacted me primarily because my, I was on the Frontiers Province Journal. They asked me to come down and talk about my experiences. I did. Um, I'm here tonight because I was invited by residents of Coventry, did the same thing, they contacted me, wanted to hear about the Lipit Ave project and asked me to speak tonight. That's why I'm here. Without the invitation, I'm not here tonight. So that's clear. Um, as has been said before, the city council has voted, uh, earlier this year, 9-0 to ban these projects in Western Cranston residential districts. Um, one of the primary reasons is because of destructive project in my neighborhood, but also because the interconnection project took place. I mean, there are neighborhoods over a mile away from that site that were impacted by the interconnection upgrade. I'm sure they knew nothing about it until they heard about it from National Grid, long after they could do anything about it. Uh, the primary, uh, discussion tonight about blasting, um, I looked at the solar description map, and it includes, part of this site includes two sections called Lipit gravelly, um, sandy loam. Well, it's not sandy loam, it's basically bedrock. It's what they had on Lipit Ave. Um, it's what they spent all, they spent four months running a gravel operation, seven days of blasting to get rid of it. We hollowed away for 40,000 cubic yards of material. We had hundreds of gravel trucks leave our site, loaded to the brim. When they talk about expenses of blasting, I'm pretty sure they didn't give away all that gravel they hauled out. Um, side effect of all that blasting is it fractured the bedrock, and of course, changes the groundwater. And if there's any iron in that rock, it'll leach out, and it turns the wetlands downstream with pooted orange color. It's called iron mag-, um, iron magnet bacteria. Two years later, those wet streams, those field, uh, wetlands and streams are still orange. They're gonna be that way for who knows how long. Not to mention, uh, many of the mature trees in those wetlands were killed off because all the, uh, Jason ground cover was destroyed. Wetlands flooded, killed the trees, mature trees. In terms of, another problem with the blasting is, it's all hypothetical. Until you see the grading plan submitted to DM, you're not gonna have really any idea what it's gonna require for blasting. I mean, I never understood what the grading plan was until it was much too late. But in sections of Lipit Ave, they lowered the grade by 20 feet, 24 feet. They raised it by 18 feet. Doing- eighteen feet. Doing so, they exposed all this bedrock they had blow up for four months. In terms of buffer zones, the key to buffer zones is topography. How is your house situated compared to the project? Are you north of the site? And you're going to look at the back wall, and you're not going, not much of an impact. If you're south of the site, you're downhill, level, you're going to look at a massive field scaring you in the face. If you're on the side of it, like I am, you look down, you're going to look down the rows. What has been mentioned tonight is the glare, solar glare. You'll be told that the solar panels absorb light, they don't reflect it, which is true. The problem is, the racks and the solar frames reflect the light. So every bright sunny morning, that clearing glows. And in the spring, during the summer, it's not that bad because of all the tree leaves. And as soon as October rolls around, the place lights up every morning, the sun is, sunshine. There's nothing anybody can do about it. What else can I talk about? New connection, oh, the problems with the adjacent condo project. The first phase has been going in right now. They have plenty of wooded buffer zones. It's not clear cut right now, they didn't go and clear cut that area. They're on the downhill side, but you can still see the project without a problem. One of my neighbors is about four hundred feet from the project, heavily wooded buffer. As soon as the lease fall, they have the view of their own private EPCOT center, which is how they described it to me. So whether you're a hundred feet, four hundred feet, eight hundred feet, all depends on topography and where you're situated for the project itself. And blasting, that appears to be the main issue here. If you look at the site, the lipid gravelly, that's going to cause a lot of problems. And at this point, you need to see, see two things. One, is a soil map. Where is it located? Where's it situated on the plan? Gives you, gives you a pretty good idea of where they're going to need to blast, do a lot of clearing. You also need to see a topog, topography map. Kind of detailed ones, so you can tell the elevations of the project compared to the adjacent houses. Where are the streams? Where are the wetlands? Should have a good idea of where the interconnection route's going to go. Those are forty-five-foot poles. Give you an idea. And if somebody says, no, I don't want you putting a guide wire on my property, like some of the folks in my neighborhood, because they were so mad at Southern Sky, they just said, get out of here. So this guy opened, I mean, now you're going to come in and put in one of those gray aluminum poles. Don't require any guide wires. And Mr. Murray's correct about the solar ordinance. The four-hundred-foot buffer was for sort of a roof Goldberg design to continue to allow these ground-based systems in Western Cranston. That was about, that was denied by the city council, nine zero, primarily because of Lipid Ave project. We do allow small accessory projects for Western Cranston residential. That's it. Mr. Murray cannot come, Mr. Palumbo cannot come back into Western Cranston, did this again. And I just want everybody is very thankful for that. On the truck traffic, we're going to have logging trucks, because I can't believe they're going to cut down those trees and then get rid of them. And that's firewood. That's not cheap. We have gravel trucks going in and out of there at some point. As far as delivery trucks, they use fifty-three-foot trailers. Wish they had a state police permit. Fifty-three-foot trailers have a hard time making tight corners. They drove over my lawn all winter long in summer. As for now, the biggest impact now is that fence. It's about a mile and a half. It completely cuts off the movement of wildlife. It's now the coyotes in our backyards howling away at night. My neighbor had a bear on her front porch a while ago. And as far as DM, they do their best they can. They are severely understaffed, don't have the manpower to do this. Give you an example. So this guy told us they were going to develop Lipid Ave in five acre parcels. Sounds nice. They came in and did forty acres in one fell swoop, just obliterated the place. I contacted DM in October, they inspected in January. That's their schedule. That's how quick they could get out there. Now, they do their best, but you can't count on them. You can't put all your eggs in one basket and say, oh, DM's going to take care of that. Because they can't. They just don't have the capability. It's a shame. It's unfortunate. There's nothing we can do about it. It's a little of the consequences. Right now, that's orange, orange wetlands, dead trees and wetlands. So again, I would pay particular attention to the blasting, as much information you can. But again, you can't get that grading plan until you approve this master plan, which is completely backwards. It's information you need now, not five, six months from now. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. That's that. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Murray, you have anything to add to that?
No, I did hear Mr. Doe say he agreed with me on one thing, four hundred foot thing.
That took us a while.
You know, I, you know, look, Doug has DM on speed dial. He, he's, he is vociferous in his, his interest in our projects and solar in general. I, you know, he's entitled to his opinion. I didn't think he was going to come on tonight and say it's wonderful. The blasting thing is, you know, to my knowledge, he doesn't have a, an engineering degree in blasting. We've given the best information we can so far. And, you know, he doesn't know, and I don't know whether there is going to be blasting. I surmise there could be, and we will get the information and have it available at the next level to better answer that question. It's just not in the normal sequence of events. She just, you know, we don't have that information tonight. So, but I thank him first time, and I'm sure I'll see him down the road at another municipality.
Is that all, Doug?
Um, yeah. One more thing about the blasting. You're fortunate this discussion is taking place right now. We found out about the need for blasting one week before the first blast. I came home one day and found a flyer from A-one Blasting Company in my back door. So I called them, said, yeah, next week we're going to start blasting. They were nice enough to notify me the day before each blast. But yeah, that's how we were treated. And they knew they were going to have to blast, must be for one before that. They weren't bothered to tell us. So, take that for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready, sir?
Yes, Mr. Crossman.
Okay, next I have Sean Mitchell. Sean, are you with us?
Yes, how are you?
Hi, Sean. Your name, spell your name and your address, please.
Sean Mitchell, M.I.T.C.H.E.L.L., sixty-seven Remington Farm Drive.
Thank you.
No problem. So, I sympathize with the people who have to abut the property, as I don't. I might be affected by noise pollution, but my question is the, and forgive me if it's been asked and answered, but the forty-five thousand in tax revenue, is that an additional forty-five thousand that the town would gain in property tax that's already being paid?
I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Murray, I think it's forty-five thousand dollars annually, but on top of that would be the permitting fees and so on. Am I correct on that, Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I, I apologize. It kind of sounded like he was stringing a rubber band on, when he was talking. I didn't hear the whole thing.
Are you just?
Mr. Flynn, you want me to take care of it?
Sure.
The forty-five thousand was the, an annual, it was going to be tangibles.
Okay.
Tax that was allowed, I guess, Mr. Murray referred to some state legislation that was enacted that would allow us to get some sort of tangible tax, and he estimated that that would be approximately forty-five thousand dollars annually. And I guess what I also heard this evening, that the land is currently in the farm, forest, and open space project, which dramatically cuts down on the amount of taxes that are currently coming to the town of Coventry. So if the project was to come out of the farm, forest, and open space, we would see an increase in real estate taxes, and I guess we'd get that forty-five thousand. So that's where I think the tax numbers would be on this project, based upon what I heard here this evening and my knowledge of what's this project.
Okay, I just didn't know if the offset of, again, I don't abut the property, but I don't know if the offset of, maybe a decrease in property value would really affect that. But again, I don't know about the property, just curious.
Mr. Flynn, it is five dollars a kilowatt by state law for the solar generation as a tangible. Five dollars per kilowatt, or five thousand per megawatt.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wazika. Does that answer your question, Mr. Mitchell?
I guess. I, I'm all, I'm new to this, so I was just curious, trying to do the math, but yes, I guess it does.
All right. Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Mr. Crossman?
Sure. Next I have Bradford Mayor. Brad, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Name and, and address, please. Spell your name.
Bradford Mayor, M.A.Y.E.R., three sixty Hope Furnace Road. Mr. Flynn, Planning Commission, and Mr. Palumbo, Mr. Murray, and now the representatives from Revity that are there tonight, thank you for your time. I just wanted to be open and honest. I got involved in this project because I'm running for office in town, and this is located within the district I would possibly be representing. I don't want to, I'm not going to repeat anything else that's already been said. I just wanted to stress the fact that this should be considered a manufacturing project due to a recent decision by Rhode Island State Supreme Court out of a case out of Portsmouth that deemed solar arrays are considered manufacturing. I know Coventry doesn't consider it manufacturing, but, um, I, and I agree with all the residents that have spoken for me. I guess my question is, does that Rhode Island State decision supersede what Coventry deems the provision for solar arrays?
Mr. D'Agostino, would you like to jump in?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman. So frankly, it's difficult to, it's difficult to determine what impact that decision would have on Coventry, because the, any decision is always a very fact-intensive inquiry. And I'm not prepared to provide an answer to that this evening. But as the chairman has indicated, this matter has, or may likely go on to further hearing. So I'm happy to update the commission as to my analysis of that case and the applicability, if any, to this particular project in Coventry.
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino. And I can say pretty, pretty clearly that it's nine fifty-eight, and I don't think we'll be closing public hearing tonight. So any information we hear tonight, we can certainly address at the next meeting. Saying that, go ahead, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, just quickly, follow up on Mr. D'Agostino, and we can, we can provide research and information on this. You know, the opponents, and Mr. Doe, and now there's raised this issue about this Portsmouth decision. It was a very specific ordinance in Portsmouth. The judge made the determination based on the wording of the ordinance and the activity. It is not applicable to Coventry, in my humble opinion, and it does not, it does not have any applicability to any other city or town than the town of Portsmouth, given their circumstances. But I'll follow up with Mr. D'Agostino on that. But I just wanted to clarify that, because I don't want people to leave tonight thinking, oh, Portsmouth said it's manufacturing. So the Coventry's ordinance says it is not manufacturing, and that's what we, we would be, we would follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
And, and if I may, just to piggyback on that, and, and just to clarify, my, my intention was to, you know, inform the board, inform the commission members of that. I, I tend to agree with Mr. Murray. I, I think I did say these are fact-intensive inquiry, fact-intensive issues, and it might not have any applicability to the town of Coventry. But if the commission is interested in hearing my analysis of it, I'm happy to provide it to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else?
Um, that was pretty much it, but I do, I do respectfully disagree. If the state says that about one town, what's good in one town for the state, it should be good for the whole state. And just that I agree with all the other residents that have spoken, and I hope the board takes their, all their testimony at face value and uses that when they're considering this master plan approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your input.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay. I've got four people left. Two, I'm sorry, it looks like three have already spoken. So I'm going to skip around. I'm going to go to the one gentleman who I don't think has spoken yet, if that's okay with you.
Okay, yes, certainly.
And then, um, it, it's up, it's up to you if you want to start hearing from people again. Um, it's ten o'clock.
Okay, it's not dumb.
Hearing, but I'll get to this gentleman right now.
Mike, Mr. Crossman?
Yes.
My, my feeling on this is we'll, we'll take a couple more. I'm going to, I'm going to keep public hearing open.
Yep.
We have a lot of information to digest. And I think at that, I think what I'm trying to say is that public hearing will not be closed tonight. It will be continued the next month. We're just going to have to figure out when we want to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Greg, I brought you on. Can you unmute yourself so we can hear you, please? There you go, sir.
I am unmuted.
Thank you.
Gregory Laboissoniere, L.A.B.O.I.S.S.O.N.N.I.E.R.E. And I'm at one thirty-one Calvin Town Road. I am directly across the street from the ingress and egress from where the, where the project looks to, will be happening. And I am also the town council representative in District Two. I, I've got a, a couple of, a couple of questions. One is, by looking at the plans, I can see that the electrical, you know, wiring, et cetera, or the, you know, the, where they're going to bring the power, it looks like it's coming out that access road, right to that point, to me, to where it looks as though they're connecting, or in the plans, anyway. Now, as far as I believe and understand that Mr. Valago owns the properties going from there, I believe at least all the way up to, or very close to the power lines, you know, further up on Calvin Town, and was curious as to whether those lines could travel across country instead of going all the way out to the road and have a national grid, you know, connect it that way, if that, in fact, is the plan as, as the, the way to go. Just curious, is that, is that an option?
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate the councilman's question. I'm going to ask if Mr. Palumbo's still available. He's a little more conversant with the, the national grid thing. Maybe he can enlighten us all.
And if he's unable to, if, as long as we can have that as part of the record to get answered at some point in the future, if not.
Yes, that was a good question. That will be answered.
Lindsay, is Ralph still available, or, or does you, you want to get back to, we'll get back to the councilman.
He should be still available. Hold on one second, Bob.
I just don't want to misspeak, so I'd rather have Mr. Palumbo.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate that. Again, and then also, well, before.
Ralph is muted, Bob, Bob, Ralph, Ralph is muted and cannot mute.
Russell, can we help that out?
Thank you, Russell, I'm sorry, I was trying to get in, I've been here. The answer to, to that question is we, in the feasibility application with National Grid, I did suggest to travel. Along the Vinagro property to that sub transmission line to stay off of Colvin Town Road. But National Grid informed me in the feasibility study that that, those sub transmission lines are full in that capacity. From other distributed generation projects that run on them, so I could not use them. And then the director.
So what's the plan where, so the plan is to bring it out to Calvin Town at that point and then where will it be connected?
At Calvin Town, it'll head north from there. I can, I don't have the, the route in front of me, I could get it from National Grid and I can communicate it to you.
Okay, I'd like to know what that is. All right, so now if, if coming out over there, what, what's the, what's the procedure? I mean, is, is National Grid going to be having to change any of those lines and the poles and the things, are they just adding? Wire, anything underground coming out of there? And is that is, I'm assuming that that is going to be the work access as well, too?
That's correct, that is the work access and National Grid typically. Will put in each time a developer does a project, they will take the opportunity to upgrade their equipment. Some of the equipment on Colvin Town Road is old and tired and they'll replace the poles. I believe the poles are single face and they're thirty-five feet, a three-phase pole will be forty-five feet, so it'll be enhanced infrastructure. It'll be higher, so it'll be safer, the voltage will be three-phase to one-phase, so you do have additional voltage. So the ten feet is for safety purposes and it's planned to be above ground, councillor and. It had north from there, but I will get you the interconnection path from there.
Okay, and generally, what is a, what is a timeframe, you know, for, for construction, should that be happening by National Grid? What, you know, does that happen before your project, after your project, during your project?
We do our best to sync it with the project timetable, there is a state legislative mandate, the National Grid. Has twelve months to design and install each project from the time we submit a complete application. So the complete, we did a feasibility application and then the next step is the impact study and that's the trigger for the twelve months. As Mr. Murray said earlier in this presentation. We don't want to do that until we know we have a project here. Because it's a considerable investment on our part to do it and we try and again, we try and this project will, as I said earlier, will take approximately. Ten to twelve months to build, so as we're starting, we'll, we'll hopefully trigger that twelve months with National Grid and it'll timeout. I like to get National Grid a three-month window because they're on, you know, there are typically delays with National Grid, so. I try to, you know, National Grid, I try to get ahead three months with them, so there are no delays when we're done with the project.
Okay, great, thank you for your, thank you for your answers there, sir. The only other, you know, only other question, and it's something that I'm not sure whether it will take a little bit of research from our. From our solicitors, et cetera, I'm, I'm just curious as to the. The, the combination of the two pieces of property to, to reach the acreage necessary. And whether like the Vinagro property will now continue to be, will not be more multi-use. As opposed to just a single use of a property, I don't know if that is in, you know, to trying. In essence, in defeating the spirit of the ordinance. And whether a property can only be of single use, meaning, you know, it's solar, we took the whole piece of property. And a certain amount of acreage could have the panels on. I would like to see, you know, again, I, I, I don't necessarily need that answer tonight, Mr. D'Agostino, but. I think you know where I'm going and I would love to get our opinion on that and I just again, put that question out there and doing it, but. Other than that, thank you for your time and I'm sure we'll be having.
Thank you, Mr. Laboissoniere. Yeah. I have three people left with their hand and they've all spoken before, do you want to hear from them again? Yeah, we'll do the three and then we'll, I think we'll, at that point, continue. Okay. Remember too, you have not, you haven't afforded the members a chance to speak yet either. Yes, I'm not gonna close public hearing now. Okay, all right. Hi, Pat? Are you there again, Pat, or is this a leftover from before? Pat Del Bracco? All right, I'm gonna try another one, okay, sir? She's not answering.
Hold on, can you hear me?
I can, they.
I don't know, I am muted here, on you? Hello?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I did, when you talked to Mr. Doe, when I went on to his property. We were talking about the telephone poles. You know, if anybody did get a chance to go down to that Lipid Avenue. You know, they talk, they talk about.
Excuse me.
For the record, please.
Your name, spell your name and your address for the record, please.
It's Patty Del Bracco, Ora Bona, one oh four Colvin Town.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Getting back to the telephone poles, I know that they may have to change them, which they have, like down near Lipid Farm. Not only did they change them, I mean, it is actually unsightly, so if anybody does get a chance to go take a ride down there, not only did they have to add more. They're higher, so probably some of the buffer would have to be cut down to allow for that, which. And, I mean, they're just huge, I mean, I can't imagine what Colvin Town would look like with these. And then I did find that, just to mention, because you do talk about the gravel pit that's already existing and it's going to be part of the property. There wasn't an amendment to your zoning ordinance that was in effect, that was signed one twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty. Under the earth removal, sand and gravel extraction. And it talks about the purpose of this article, protecting the environment and the health, safety and welfare of the public. By controlling those activities involved with removing of mining of earth, sand and gravel. I know this is more probably for the gravel pit for commercial purposes, but you're also going to be doing that with the land that you purchased. And in section one oh four zero, they also talk about how it was amended. In that site for buffers and setbacks, that the following buffer areas are to be left in their natural state during the life of the permit. A, three hundred feet away from any street line. B, two hundred feet from any other boundary line and C, six hundred feet from any occupied dwelling. And the entrance of the facility shall be landscaped in accordance with Article seventeen. So I believe that this should also apply to your solar farm installation, that those setbacks should be the same thing. If you decide to go forward with this project or any other project in Colvin Town. That's all I have to say, thank you.
I appreciate your comment.
I can't hear.
I appreciate your comment. Mr. Crossman? Okay. Kelly, are you there? Kelly, are you around?
Yes, thank you, Kelly Powers, P O W E R S, eight Watercrest Court. I just had a couple more questions for Mr. Murray. One was, which way will the solar be facing, is it facing like towards my house?
The panels face, it's the southern direction.
So.
The sun, the sun.
I can, Bob, just let me answer that, I can answer that.
Go ahead, David.
It's Dave Russo, Dupree Engineering, the panels, the face of the panels, the, the black portion face south, which would be facing. Towards the back of your home, so they'd be facing that way.
They will be facing my backyard, okay? Thank you. My next question is, Mr. Murray, you didn't answer, who does, who is the company that Reverti uses for the blasting if it's not Vinagro?
Well, Vinagro's not a blasting company, it's a site excavation company, they do multiple things, they're not a blasting company. I don't know yet which blasting company we would use. I have a, we're involved in another project in another community. We, we have a blasting company out of Maine involved in that. So we, we will provide. Detailed information at, at the next level. And if necessary, I will, I will bring down the blasting expert to testify, to answer questions about technique, process. So, but it is, it is, it is not Mr. Vinagro that does the blasting, so there are. We're talking about companies of national reputation that, that deal with projects up and down the East Coast. Some very intricate blasting right along the sides of highways, there's, you know, there, so to answer your question. I don't know yet which company Mr. Palumbo will hire for this. But it will be a reputable company that, that the town will be able to meet and, and question.
So when they do the blasting, whatever this national company, whatever, whenever they do the blasting. How far in advance do they give when they're doing the blasting for them to come in and do a pre? Like the pre-inspection, I guess.
Um, I, I don't, I can't answer it with like, you know, they do it, you know, fifteen days before blasting. There is ample notice. It's a process that they're used to. You know, given the interest in this project, if we're allowed to proceed. I assure you between Reverti Energy and my office and the blasting company, there will be. Plenty of notice, plenty of communication, opportunity to answer questions at your house. That's the assurance I'm willing to make tonight, but I can't give you the specifics. That, you know, we're gonna start February twenty-third, so they'll notify you on January fifteenth, I just don't know that right now.
No, I just didn't know if there was a specific timeframe, thank you, so you are recorded and you heard you say you are assuring that there is.
Unless I retire, these words are good.
Okay, and the next thing I just wanted to touch upon quickly and I apologize. You had mentioned in your presentation, you were going to ask for waivers, what would they be?
Sure, they are. They're with me, the waivers are, we're not looking to avoid being, being responsible for these things. It's just that some of them are, and you know, you know, Mr. Crossman identified them. For example, you know, one of the things they ask are your location of percolation test holes, we haven't done those yet. That's part of the soil evaluation we do, location of a groundwater determined test holes. Location and dimensions of all existing utilities within and immediately adjacent to the subdivision. Provisions for collecting and discharging stormwater, we're probably not doing that. Proposed location of catch basins and manholes, there will, there, those, you know, some of these requirements are more. Appropriate for like a traditional residential subdivision. You know, the, we have to give them an estimate of the approximate cubic yards of rock and ledge excavation. Yards to be, yards of field to be brought on the site, yards of gravel excavation to be removed. That's all a calculation that we just have not done yet because we don't have the information. One of the other waivers was our DEM wetlands permit, we don't have that yet because we haven't applied for it. We will provide it at the next level and the last one was an approved soil erosion and sedimentation control plan. That goes with the DEM application, so it's not a question of. Avoiding providing this information, it's a timing. It's a timing issue, you know, you know, sometimes in a, with a traditional residential subdivision. We might already have some of those things, wouldn't need a waiver, at this point, those things are. Not yet queued up to be provided, they will be and will satisfy the planning department and the town and the city on all those issues. At the next level.
I feel like those are important to be done prior to, in my opinion, I mean, the, especially from DEM. And I would formally like to ask the planning and zoning to make sure that that is done prior to. Anything going forward, because I feel like those are all very important and those, each one that you just mentioned. Is there a way to make a formal, like ask, Mr. Crossman? Mr. Flynn?
They're not actually done in the master plan. The way our regs are set up, but Mr. Crossman wants to, to. Answer that a little more, he can.
I feel like those are very important things that need to be tested prior to giving any further. You know, saying yes, like go ahead with it, I feel like those are things, you know, that, that needs to be tested. Those all need to be tested.
Uh, Mr. Flynn, I mean, it's up to the commission on whether they want to grant the waivers or not, some of them. You, you can't, until you get your final engineering done, you can't do. Like the soil erosion plan as an example, you need your, you need your entire project designed. To decide what you're gonna need for soil erosion and control measures, the same with DEM, but. You know, it's up to the commission to decide whether or not they want to grant the waivers. And I'm gonna leave that in your capable hands. Right, and we're, and we're not gonna address the waivers tonight, but some of them, some of them, the board may request that they want done before the, the preliminary. But, but as Mr. Crossman stated, some of those cannot be done in the master plan.
Okay.
And I'll explain to you, and let me explain to you just why briefly. Like one of them was stormwater management and design, now if this was a residential subdivision. What the applicant would do at the master plan stage, they would not do any engineering. But what they would do is they would lay out the proposed roads, lay out the proposed lots and they would just sketch. Circled large areas on the plan where they would collect their stormwater. They wouldn't do any design, they would just designate areas. I don't know that, you know, stuff like that applies to this project, I don't know if they'll be doing any stormwater management. So they really haven't done any site design layout or grading, so I just don't think they can do. Some of these, some of those waivers at this point in time.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Kelly?
Um, some of it, I just, you know, I, I'm really curious and I'm really concerned. You know, between, and I know Mr. Murray is not familiar with it, but that rotten egg smell, all the stuff going on behind there. I really want to see what DEM has to say about, you know, ripping up forty-something acres of land and. I just. You know, it just doesn't make sense to me, the other question I had was when Mr. Murray had said, or I'm sorry, Mr. Carter had said with the landscape engineering. That there will be a road to the fence to access, it would be a grass road. Which I question, because what if there's a fire? Now, he made mention of the fire chief and fire marshal having a lockbox code. I just want to make a friendly reminder that we don't have a fire station on Station Street anymore. So the fire department coming in is coming. A decent way. You know, and that's a concern of mine as well.
Our response, just to, just to clarify that on the, the central Coventry, our response times have not dipped. Since the Station Street Fire Department has been closed, so.
times have not dipped since the Station Street Fire Department has been closed. So our response times are very good.
No, and I agree with that. I, I totally agree with that. I am, I, I truly love our fire department. My concern is with the access road being so far down, being a grass road, you know, them being to have access if, heaven forbid, there is an emergency.
Go ahead, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, just quickly, I, and I didn't hear Mr. Carter say a grass road. Typically, it's a gravel road around the perimeter, not grass. There is, there is grass under the panels. And the other issue is, there is quite a bit of sophistication with these panels and the wiring. You know, if a panel, you know, has a scintilla of a problem, it's alarmed and Reverti Energy knows that. And there are plenty of emergency precautions in place. I understand her concern, but the, you know, our track record in 25 or 26 projects, there's never been a problem with a fire. We don't anticipate one here, but we do extensive training with the fire department. The system, there's emergency shut-offs. There's a lot of things that go on, redundancy to make certain that there's never a problem here. But I, I think my experience on all our projects are gravel road, not a grass road.
Okay, thank you.
Dave Russo with Dupree, I, I did mention that, Bob, about the grass road around the perimeter, because sometimes the fire department doesn't need the gravel road around the entire, um, entire. I, no, I did say that. And that's because the fire department typically won't drive into these systems. If there's a fire in them, every fire department I've spoken to, they're going to turn the kill switch off and shut it down. And they're going to make sure it doesn't go to surrounding properties. So they, you know, the access around them sometimes can be limited, but that's something we'll have to work with them on. And it's beneficial for the environment to have grass access roads versus gravel or paved pavement. So that's something we'll discuss with the fire department.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I didn't hear the grass part. And all the other projects I've done, they've been gravel. So I, I didn't mean to overstep my, you know, I'm the lawyer tonight, not the engineer. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
Okay. I just want to say thank you.
You're very welcome.
Um, I, I have to admit, and especially now knowing that it is going to be facing my backyard, is even more alarming to me. I don't know. I just, I, I just want to formally say that I, I don't want this. Nobody in the neighborhood wants it. And I hope that our planning and zoning board does the right thing because this just isn't fair.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
The chair?
Crossman, you said you had a couple more people?
We had one. Now we have two. Do you mind making a statement that we're going to cap it at these two? Or I'll go as long as you want. I just want to know what you want to do.
No, we'll cap it at these two. I'm going to keep public hearing open.
Okay.
And we'll, and we'll push, we'll push the meeting to, the meet, the, the next meeting is in August.
Yeah, because both of these two, Ron, they've already spoken before, so. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Call-in user number three. Hello? Call-in user number three?
He left, Russ.
Okay. Ann Harris, are you there? I'd ask you to unmute.
Ann Harris?
Here I go. Sorry, I was on a different screen. I just wanted to.
Just show me an address, please, again.
Ann Harris, 179 Coventown. Everyone seems to be concerned about the blasting. I just wanted to say, and this isn't a question for anybody, but just wanted to say that I did see them in action and they do a good job. They actually set up their equipment on my property. And they actually told me what they do and how they do it. And they do test runs before they actually do the actual blast, which is, which is good. And the people that did it at the time, and I know it's not Vinagro, I think it's a company, I think it's Maine, Maine Blasting or something, but what, what have you. And they also put in a, across the street, they put up a sign that says blasting today. I usually get notification because I actually called Vinagro and I spoke to Matt Leonard to get advanced notification to make sure that we know. And I put it on Facebook to say, attention Coventown or whatever. And I said that they're going to be blasting today or, or tomorrow, whatever day I get the notice. And also the Coventry depart, Coventry Police Department are supposed to be calling all the residents as well. And it's, there's been quite a while now since the last blasting. I want to say it happened a year ago, April, from what I can remember. If there was any more, I was at work and I didn't notice anything. So I just wanted to let you know that if anyone is interested in getting advanced notification to make sure you're on that list, just call Matt Leonard at Vinagro and I have that number if you care to have it, or you can just look it up. It's up to you. So, but just so people can feel more at ease with, with the blasting, at least they know they can contact somebody to get notification.
Hey, thank you very much for your comment.
All right. You're welcome. Have a good night.
Have a good night. That's it, Mr. Crossman?
That is it. I have no more hands raised.
Okay.
Good night, Mr. Kenny.
I, I want to ask the board members before I make any decisions, but I think because of, because of the site size and, and the, this type of project, I think I'm going to keep public hearing open because I think we're going to have a lot of answers to some of the questions. And there might be more questions from the public on the next meeting. So if any board members want to, want to see what, say what they think, I think I'm going to continue it to the, to the August meeting.
I'd like to say so. I got two questions. I would like to know, I would like to know how much of the town of Coventry is going to receive with this. That's what I'd like to know. You, you check it out and bring it back to us, how much we're going to get from, from the town of, for the town of Coventry in taxes. I'd like to know that. And I'd like to get a environmental review team out there and check out their environmental stuff. Like, I like to have that. So I put a motion on the floor to get a review?
Put a motion, you just to suggest that.
Okay.
We haven't really asked our questions to the, to the professionals yet. But it's well taken because I, I believe there probably should be some type of ERT done. We just have to distinguish on what we want done. There's many types of ERTs. So we'll have to consider what we want, what type of ERT we're, we're looking for.
Yeah.
Anybody else from the board?
I, I just, I just, one statement, one comment. I appreciate you continuing the public hearing until the next meeting because I think it is going to be important that the solicitor elaborate a little further on why this state Supreme Court decision for Portsmouth does not apply to Coventry. I agree, it was probably unique, but I think we need to have that in the record. One of the most important aspects of master plan approval is going to be whether or not this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I don't have any reason not to think it's consistent, but I think that opinion is going to weigh very heavily on how we approach that. And then my only other comment is, it, it's a long meeting. I know the planning board members signed up for it. I know the applicant and his team are here because they are trying to gain approval. But I would also just like to appreciate my gratitude and thanks to Mr. Warzika and Mr. Crossman, who are still here at 10:30 at night after working a full day for the town. I appreciate
Thank you, Mr. Colonial. And Mr. Flynn, I just like, just for, August 26th is our next meeting. So if you are going to continue this, I'd like you to continue it to a date specific, please.
Yes, I'd like to continue it to our August 26th meeting.
I make a motion to continue this meeting till August 26th.
A second.
I have a, I have a motion by Mr. Colonial and a second by Mr. Ray's. And I'll, and I'll poll, I'll poll the board. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson? Is Mr. Anderson there?
We lost him.
He's there.
I don't know. Who did I?
All right, here he is. All right, Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Poselli?
Aye.
Mr. Colonial?
Aye.
And Chairman says aye. And Ms. Lukowitz, of course, you know, has left the meeting. So we're continued to next month, which would be August 26th.
Murray, do you have a question?
I just wanted to say thank you to the board and to the public. We'll see you on August 26th, but I appreciate everybody's time and attention. Thank you.
And we appreciate yours also. So I'll, I'll have a, take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Mattson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For the record, I'll poll everybody. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Ray?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Poselli?
Aye.
Mr. Colonial?
Aye.
And Mr. Flynn says aye. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
I want to do this more, say.